Good evening, everyone. Call this meeting to order. Roll call, please, Ms. Donna.
Yes. Ms. Garcia? Ms. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Garing?
Present.
Ms. Chesney?
Here.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, if you can come to the front, please.
All right. Good evening. I'm Lacey Adams, Director of Elementary Schools, and I would like to recognize two special people tonight that were recently awarded the 2024 Missouri Council of Teachers of Mathematics Outstanding Elementary Educator, Ms. Kelly Robb. Please come up. I'd also like to recognize Chantel Cross, who is the Outstanding Instructional Coach for the Missouri Council Teachers of Mathematics for 2024. Very lucky to have them in the district, both at Carden Park and Mr. Wachtel, Principals here, Stacia Studer, who works with Chantel, and Mr. Nolte, who serves on the MCTM Awards Committee. So, thank you for that, and I would just like to give them another round of applause. I'm excited that they're here. They do a lot of work in the summer. They bring MCTM Conference in the summer that teachers can volunteer to go to, and Northwest Missouri has the largest turnout for two years running now. So, it's because of these ladies. So, thank you. You have to go up there and then we'll take pictures.
You ready? One, two, three.
Good evening. My name is Megan Gaul, and I am here on behalf of Spring Garden to recognize our amazing librarian, Lindsay Holland. She was nominated this year by her colleagues and peers and is our Regional Librarian of the Year for Northwest Missouri, and so she will go on and compete at the next level and hopefully do well in that. She does all kinds of things for us at Spring Garden. She creates a space in the library where students feel welcome. She opens the library up every morning for students to come. They play chess, they play with Rubik's cubes, they have trading cards, really anything that is kind of outside of the box, she opens up that space for them. She has a book club that comes at lunch and meets with her, and then she does all kinds of things with our Student Council as well, and so she's a wonderful person to have at Spring Garden, and so I just want to recognize her this evening for that. On a side note, she also, this is not official here, but we had a cookie bake-off last week at Spring Garden, and she won the Cookie Master of Spring Garden, too. So, she has many talents, so I just want to congratulate her, and we are very thankful to have her at Spring Garden. So, congratulations, Lindsay.
Is there is no audience participation, correct?
Right.
Okay. And I will take a motion to approve the agenda.
I need to amend the agenda, as I forgot to put the approval of minutes on there from last month, so I'm adding Item 5B, Approval of Minutes, and it's just the minutes from the regular meeting.
Perfect. Is there a motion?
I'll make it.
Thank you, Rick. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Rhonda. Do you call the vote, please?
Ms. Rick, I'm sorry, Rick and Rhonda?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia? Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Garing?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
No.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Five-one. The consent agenda, is there a motion for approval?
Thank you, Ms. Jeter.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Whitney and Kim?
Ready? Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
I want to clarify, so the consent agenda now includes the minutes?
Yes.
Then a no.
Mr. Garing?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia? Ms. Williams?
Yes. And the motion passes? Five-one. Admin reports? Dr. Edgar?
Okay, good evening. I just have a couple of things. Actually, I'm going to defer to the agenda later on to talk a little bit about vision forward and where we're at with that process. But I did want to, in the superintendent's report tonight, speak again to the five committees that we have represented on the superintendent's cabinet. We will be presenting information on two of those next month. You will be hearing from the Talent and Development Committee, and you will also be hearing from the Community Connections Committee. So, I had told you that I felt like they would eventually get to the board level, and we're ready for those two to come to that level. So, I think there'll be some really good information that's passed along to you next month in regards to the committees. This time, I'd entertain any questions you might have in regards to that.
If there are no questions? Dr. McGinnis?
So, the last two months, I've talked about beginning-of-the-year data with iReady and Mastery Connect. Right now, we are just wrapping up middle-of-the-year diagnostic assessments, so hopefully I will have that ready for you in January. And so, I have two documents at your stations. One of them is our goals, and then another one, I have just some progress on our goals. So, I'm not going to go over all of our goals tonight, but I have some of them that we've made some significant gains on, and I just wanted to bring those to your attention. So, first one that I would like to look at is Goal 1, Action Step 1. And if you look at where it's highlighted there, that's the ones I'm going to hit on. So, one of our goals was expansion of early learning. Last spring, we had an enrollment of 547, so we set a goal of 575 kids. So, as of last Wednesday, Lake has 282 students, Mark Twain has 303 students. They had a total of 585, and I wouldn't be surprised if they have a few extra as of now. So, we have met that goal with expanding early learning opportunities. And then, Action Step 3, Revision to Math and Science Pathways. That one, we talked about with the secondary piece last year. Part of that was moving biology to sophomore-level course, so that one has also been met. And then, Action Step 6A, Implementing Reset Rooms at All Elementary Schools, at least having a half-person, and that has also been met. We may have a position where it's a half-person at one school, and then they also work at another school. So, but all of our elementaries have reset rooms now, and from the feedback we've been given from principals, I think those have been very successful and beneficial. And then, Goal 2, District Attendance to 90%. So, if you look at this paper here, not the highlighted one, but the other one, as of last Thursday, our district attendance was 84.73. And then, right below that, you'll see a little chart, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention. That's our MSIP 6 Guidance that shows you how many points we gain on APR based off of our attendance. So, you can see, 84.73 is just shy of three points, so if we could get to that 85 mark, that would be great. So, I just thought that may be helpful for you to see those cutoff scores, and that kind of helps us set goals as well. And then, Goal 3, Action Step 1, is about all of our high school students or seniors having a CCR assessment, so that's either the ASVAB, if they're typically going to the military, the ACT, if a student's planning on going to college, and then the Work Keys, if a student is unsure or going straight into the workforce, or it could be a two- or four-year college. So, all of our high schools have held a mass testing day and have those knocked out. Now, that, we still have to look at that closely for our APR, because it does matter how they perform on those assessments, not just checking in the box that they've taken it, but they at least have done those mass testing days to where all of our seniors will have an assessment on file. And then, Action Step 3, 4, that was for our kindergarten entry assessment, and we wanted 95% of our kindergarteners to have that completed, and we ended this year at 96.62%, so that goal has been met. Goal 4 is everything with our graduation rate. So, previously, we had set our graduation goal to be above 80%. With us ending at 89% last year, we decided to increase that goal to 92%. And again, at the bottom of that page, that MSIP 6 Guidance, you can see where we fell this year, being at 89%, we received 15 points. But if we had gotten to that 92%, we would have had five additional points overall on our APR. So, it's progress, because the year before last year, we had 10 points, so every year, we've gone up a little bit, so hopefully we will get there. And then, Action Step 4, 1, Portrait of a Graduate. We have finally settled on those five traits, those learner dispositions, so we'll be rolling that out and providing some learning for our staff at Accelerate in February. And then, the last piece, Goal 4, Action Step 3, Continually Monitor Data Throughout All Four Years of High School. I think you guys remember this, but your graduation rate depends on your freshman cohort. So, when a kid starts their freshman year, and let's say they drop and they quit attending school three months later, that kid is still factored into that school's overall graduation rate until another school district picks up that kid. So, if that kid, that we don't receive any records requests, then they stay on our books. And so, we started this last year where we started tracking our cohorts from that beginning of freshman year, that list of kids, and we continually just track those every quarter. Katie Knibb at TMC Data Management is super helpful in making sure that we keep this up to date, and then we meet with our high school principals to make sure they're aware of who those kids are, and they keep trying to locate those kids and see where they're at. So, that's just a little bit of an update on some of the goals. So, some celebrations, for sure, especially with graduation rate, but just wanted to give you those little pieces, and then I can do more of the goals in January if we have more progress. Any questions for me?
A lot of good news.
Yes. We're making progress, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGinnis. And if there are no questions? Approval of the bills, Dr. Seagars?
Yes, I think a couple of you had a couple of questions that you sent to the business office. If there aren't any further questions, I'd ask for a motion to approve the bills.
I had one question that didn't get forwarded. Red Wheel for $33,000, what do we get for that, and then what happens?
Red Wheel, that would be our cost of the goods, and then we get the profit. So, that probably is the upfront cost.
So, we pay like the upfront cost of things?
We collect the money. Once we collect it, they invoice us for the cost of the goods.
Okay, so this expense was already, it had already happened?
We'd already collected the money, yes.
That was all I was wondering?
Yeah. Yeah, we don't float Red Wheel credit or anything like that.
Well, no, I just, I didn't understand if that was like a subscription to like do it, or kind of how that worked.
No, that's just, that's the pizzas. That's the pizzas or the cinnamon rolls or whatever there are, Red Wheel.
All right, that's all.
Don't remember anymore.
I don't either. That's fine, thanks.
Are there any additional questions? If there are none, is there a motion on approval of the bills?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mike. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Rick. Call the vote whenever you're ready.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Abstain.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Garing?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Six-to-one extension? Dr. Seagars?
Financials? If we are, this is through the end of November, so 42% through the fiscal year. To give you a comparison point, we are at 43% overall on expenditures. Our operating's at 35%, so we're in good shape there budget-wise. Our expenses are up 2.3 million, but of that, salary and benefits are up 3.1 million. So, actually, we're down in some other areas with some expenses. Purchased services are actually down a little bit at this point. I think that's attributed to our lower sub-fill, so that's a good thing. Revenues, our state revenues are down 987,000 from last year. Again, this was anticipated due to loss of the pre-COVID WADA. Tax revenue is down 2.35 million, and that's again to the one-time TIF money that we received last year, and the delinquent tax collections are down, which again is a good thing, that there aren't as many people with delinquent taxes, but we're just down on those collections a little bit from this year. The Healthcare Trust, I want to talk just a little bit about, because it may look like that number's down a little bit. I've talked a little bit with the board about with the way our funding comes. We get all the money upfront in January, and then it goes for the calendar year, although our fiscal year runs July 1, July 1. And so, we have now made five payrolls, and we'll make six payrolls with the increased salaries and benefits that we approved with the passage of the rollback in August. So, we have those additional expenses, but we're not going to see the revenue from that tax money until we start to get that in January. So, it creates a little bit of a cash flow here at the end of the year, and to help us offset that a little bit, we have slow-paid ourselves in the Healthcare Trust. And so, we're two payments behind in the Healthcare Trust. Not going to be a problem. We still have about 4.2 million in assets in the investments from the Healthcare Trust, so we'll start to catch those up. We're actually got some good county payments this month, and so we'll start to see that number look a little bit better. So, we do show being down 1.1 million this month from the end of October. Again, that's got to do with the timing of our payroll payments there with that. If we had the payroll payments in there the way they will be roughly, we would be up about 800,000 from this time last year. So, we're in good shape there. I just want to point that out to you, that that looks like that number's gone down quite a bit there, but that has to do with the timing of some payroll there. I think that's it. Unless you have any questions about anything.
I'm just going to ask about what I always ask about. So, it's a timing issue of the, I guess more specifically, of the 3.1 million increase in wages. Do you know about how much that's going to be offset with revenue in, I'm assuming, January?
Yeah, and I'm going to bring a budget amendment to you in February. Because of the timing of payments, because of when we'll start to see that money in, that's when we'll probably have a pretty good idea. January will get us kind of cleaned up to where everything's caught up a little bit, and so we'll bring to you a budget amendment in February, which should give a lot clearer picture of where we anticipate being at the end of the year.
I'll save my questions for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Seagars. Is there a motion for approval?
Some.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Garing?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Miller? Ms. Garcia? Ms. Williams?
Yes. And the motion passes? Seven-zero. Thank you, Dr. Seagars. Dr. Cross?
All right. Good evening, everyone. I left your supplemental personnel report at your workstations. Don't believe there's anything unusual in either the personnel report or the supplemental, so unless there are questions, I would ask that you approve them as presented.
I'd just like to make a note of Dr. Cross's retirement that's listed in the personnel report. It isn't there.
Yeah, you tried to slide that in.
Tried to slide it in. So, I'd just like to say thank you. I know that when you took over, how many years ago was it?
Nine.
Nine, but it was not in the best of shapes, our SDR department, and thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
Is there a motion for approval?
Some.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Garing?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Seven-zero? Action items, audit Dr. Seagars?
Yes, John Cummings is here from KPM. He's our contracted auditor, and he's completed the 2324 audit, and he's going to share a few of those results with you. Thank you, John.
Thank you all for having me this evening. I'm John Cummings with KPM CPAs out of Springfield, an audit services shareholder there. You should have a bound booklet and two stapled letters that are audit-related there at your workstation. We're going to start on page four of the bound booklet. I will keep the comments very high-level and very brief, because your agenda looks pretty lengthy, and I think it would probably be welcome to get home before 10 o'clock for all of you tonight, so I wish you luck with the rest of your agenda. On page four, what you'll see is the Independent Auditor's Report, and it's kind of the point behind what it is that we do, and the most important thing is been moved up front or up to the top of this letter in the Opinions paragraph. And in the second part of that, you'll see that "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective modified cash basis, financial position of governmental activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the St. Joseph School District as of June 30, 2024." That is an unmodified or a clean opinion, so that's the best possible result, and so good job on that. Our basis for those opinions is that we conducted our audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, and the standards applicable to financial audits contain the government auditing standards issued by the Controller General of the United States. And further down in this letter, you'll see that management has some responsibilities for the financial statements, and that they selected the basis for accounting. As modified cash, I've determined that that is appropriate under the circumstances. I will just say that that is very consistent with Missouri school districts, and management is also responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with the modified cash basis of accounting. So, that's kind of where the responsibilities lie. With that, we'll turn over to page 13, look at some numbers. This is the Statement of Receipts, Disbursements, and Changes in Fund Balances for the Governmental Funds, again on modified cash basis. This is basically the receipts, the disbursements, the other financing sources and uses, and the net change, and all of that taken against the beginning balances for each fund and comes to an ending fund balance. So, on total receipts for your general fund, you had $78,868,206. That's up about 1.3 million from last year. On the Special Revenue Fund, receipts were $62,414,710. That's down about $632,000 from last year. In your Debt Service Fund, the total receipts were $8,735,995. That's up about 1.1 million from last year. And last but not least, your Capital Projects Fund had total receipts of $12,222,928, which is down about 1.8 million from last year. So, in total, you had total receipts of $162,241,839, which is down about $95,000, and that, to me, is about as flat a revenue stream as you can possibly imagine with this size of budget. On the disbursement side of things, total disbursements in the general fund were $68,347,16. That's up about 9.4 million from last year. On the Special Revenue Fund, or your Teachers' Fund, total disbursements were $77,345,123. That's up about 5.6 million from last year. Those are basically the operating funds of the district, and so in total, expenses climbed by about $15 million there, and that was according to budget. When you look at the budget to actual, you actually, in your general fund, were projected to lose or go down in balance by about $12 million, and you wound up, for the general fund, after transfers and other items, only decreasing by $9,191,833. So, overall, as compared to plan, a better year than expected, I believe. So, after that decrease for the year, the district has an ending fund balance of $36,867,754 in the general fund. So, overall, a strong fund balance and fund balance percentage, so again, according to plan. So, with your Debt Service Fund, total disbursements were $6,666,823. That's up about $304,000 from last year, and you ended the year up $2,69,172,000 and had an ending balance of $9,854,215. In your Capital Projects Fund, just as the auditor and looking at all of the expenses and all the things, you guys have had a lot of projects going on across your district over not just this year, but the last several years. And so, I think good things for your students and the people in the community to have, you know, things like air conditioning and that kind of good stuff that people like. But from an audit perspective, that means we ask for an awful lot of invoices and things, and we wind up just getting into a lot of leads there. But total disbursements were $23 million. But total dispersments were 23,633,289 in your capital projects fund. That's down about 4.3 million. You had bond proceeds of 20 million and premium on those bond proceeds of $1,028,532. You had a sale of other property of $124,859 and transfer in from the general fund of So the total net change in fund balances for the year was an increase of $14,540,489 and an ending balance of $21,027,811, which to me says you still have some more projects to finish up, so good luck with all of that. Across all your funds in total, there was a net increase of $7,417,828, and the district had total ending fund balances of $67,749, or excuse me, $67,749,780. So overall, good financial year for the district, and I think things went mostly according to plan on that front, which is always welcome. I would say that a lot of districts are starting to see, as the ESAR funds kind of are going away, kind of re-leveling the budget and that sort of thing, is going to be a little bit of a ripple effect through your budget, I would imagine, just like other districts are experiencing. So be cognizant of that as you see those totals on revenues and expenditures in future budget cycles, because they're going to look a little different than what you've seen over the last three years. Any questions on financial stuff?
This may be, I'm not sure how long you've been doing our audit, but do we know the number of unmodified opinions we've had in a row?
So what I, it's a lot.
Six or seven?
I would say probably ten.
So does that make us a low-risk auditee, or does that matter?
It does not make you a low-risk auditee, not because you're risky.
Right.
But because you're modified cash basis, and there's no state statute requiring that. So that basically triggers it as not being qualifying for low-risk auditee. But other than that, as far as recommendations and internal control deficiencies and material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, we have to look for all of that stuff and write it up. And I was talking to Dr. Segres actually right before the meeting, and I said, well, the district's come a long ways, because when I came in here, between the yellow book letter, which is where we put the internal control deficiencies and that sort of thing, and the management recommendation letter, there were 26 findings. That's my recollection of that year. And they weren't minor things, they were big glaring things. And so the district had a lot of work to do just to get things operating in a way that was controlled. And it was things like doing bank racks and reviewing bank statements and having reviews of different levels of transactions, having limits on credit cards, approving stipends. There was a litany of things. And so the district has worked really hard over the years, not only to correct those things, but also to maintain those corrections. Because in a fairly short amount of time, those improvements that you make to your internal controls can actually just fall off. And so just, you know, a couple of years of not maintaining it, and the stuff stops working. So it is an ongoing process, and it requires commitment from all the people that are involved in the process to keep all of that going. So kind of getting ahead of things a little bit, but I would say thank you to the district from this level all the way down to the people, you know, taking it day by day on the accounting stuff, for taking all of those internal controls and the things seriously, making sure that it is given the time and effort that it needs to continue. So hopefully that answers your question.
That did, thank you.
Okay. All right, well, we'll turn over to page 53, which we kind of just touched on a bit. Within the audit that we do, we call it audit in general terms, it's actually an audit of your financial statements, it is an audit of your federal grant programs that are considered major, and then also an examination of certain information that's turned into the state for some funding calculations that they do. So it's more than just one thing in this bound booklet, you know, it's basically three things in there. So this kind of gives you a good snapshot of the two audit things. This is the statement or schedule of findings and question cost and the summary of auditor's results. And at the top of the page, you can see it's broken out into financial statements and federal awards. That's your financial statement audit and your federal audit in those sections. And so you'll see that on modified cash basis of accounting, as noted on page four, you have an unmodified opinion, but as far as internal controls over financial reporting, there were no identified material weaknesses and no reportable significant deficiencies, and also no non-compliance material to the financial statements. So that's all good stuff for the district. On the federal awards side, that is a little more complicated, and I won't bore you with all the details, but basically, any program that's over $750,000 has to be tested at least once every third year. And you have to, because you're not a low-risk auditee, test over 40% of the federal programs. So we wound up testing three this year, and your COVID-19 coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, also the special education cluster, and then the COVID-19 education stabilization fund monies that came through. On the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, that was about 3.18 million. The special education cluster amounts to about 2.89 million, and the ESAR funds or education stabilization fund amount was 9.59 million. So the total tested was 15.66 million. So a lot. You had 27.87 million in total federal expenditures during the year, so we've tested 56% of your total federal awards. And there's a lot of opportunities to trip up, as everyone knows, with federal requirements. And the district has worked diligently in the business office and then also in the special education office to make sure that those compliance requirements are being met. And in our testing, everything came through as it was supposed to be to meet all the compliance requirements that were required to test. So good job on all of that as well. Having said all of that, that means that there are no material weaknesses identified on the federal awards side, also no significant deficiencies identified on the federal awards side either. So nothing to report to the Fed. You guys are a little bit interesting in that the dollar threshold used to distinguish between a type A and a type B program, I mentioned $750,000, that's the rule of thumb. If you actually go over $25 million, that number, it changes a little bit. It goes to 3% of the total. So you can see there, your $836,097 is the type A, type B threshold distinguishing. So just an interesting auditor thing, probably not interesting to anyone but auditors. So anyway, any questions on the single audit and the federal audit?
On the major programs, those are going to be every three years, you just said. How, what, do we have minor programs, so under that threshold, is there a requirement?
So federal programs break down into two classifications. You have type A programs, which are basically over that, in your case, $836,000 threshold, and type B programs. And then basically, if you have, through a risk assessment, a low-risk type A, and you're not going to test it, then you have to risk assess a type B and determine if it needs to be tested. If it winds up being high-risk, you'd have to test it.
Okay.
It's kind of rare to test type Bs.
Makes sense, thank you.
More nerdy auditor stuff, sorry.
Sorry, I don't like it.
Okay, so with that, I will just, for the sake of time, refer you to the two letters that are stapled, one of which will start with ongoing cybersecurity and internal controls monitoring. I know the district does have insurance and does monitor that stuff. We put this in here because we had a client that basically, they did some of the things right when they had a phishing incident, and they didn't ask all the right questions. So we wanted to be sure we provided people with the right questions to ask in the event that somebody was trying to defraud the district through cyber means. And so that's kind of what's listed out here in this first item. The other item is a reminder to turn funds that are just hold outstanding checks and that sort of thing over to unclaimed property. And then there's a listing of new pronouncements, I will tell you, just kind of high level. None of those are all that impactful because you are cash basis, and they would relate more to accrual basis entities. So they're there for just information, but they're not impactful to the district beyond just footnote disclosures. The particular district with the cyber issue, they paid two pay requests on a construction project and used bond funds to do it, and realized a week later that they hadn't actually paid their vendor. And so in their case, fortunately, superintendent was friends with a Secret Service agent, and that person had a friend who was on desk duty and was able to actually track all the $74,000 of that down and got it back for them. And it was right at between $2 and $3 million. So it was not-
You gave your friends on the Secret Service.
It was-
Well, $74,000 is not that great. It's sort of nothing.
Well, I will tell you, they got all but $74,000 of it back. So I would say that was pretty amazing. Most of the time in these cases, what we see is that if you don't catch it within 48 hours, you're out of luck, and you're likely to not get anything back. The interesting part in this for me was that their insurance company basically got out of paying anything on the $74,000 that they were out. So their cyber didn't pay out, their general liability didn't pay out, nothing paid out. So not great, but just kind of interesting. So anyway, that's one of the letters, you can read through it as you have time. I don't want to take up, I know a guy's got to drive to Troy. So I know you guys want to get to your agenda, but the other letter is the letter that is required communication from us auditors to those charged with governance, which is all of you. It's our last chance to tattle, and so if anybody's disagreeable, uncooperative, or just doesn't get along, or just mean-spirited, we can throw something in there about it. I will spoil your interesting read, it's not an interesting read, it'll be very boring. Everybody was very helpful, very diligent in getting everything we asked for, so we certainly do appreciate that and do appreciate all the help in getting through the audit. I know that Dr. Edgar and Dr. Segres, Jenny, she's over there, it's a lot of work when we're onsite, and so we do appreciate all of the help and all the patience that they show with us when we are here. If you have any questions, feel free to ask, or if something comes to mind later, feel free to get in touch with me. I'm available all year, happy to help, so I guess that's what I have. So thank you. All right, thank you all, and have a safe and happy holiday season.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
I'd just like to make a comment. John noted that we do a good job of keeping those things in place that sometimes fall off, and I would just tell you, I want to give a shout out to the people in the business office, Jenny and Katie and Aaron and Christie, Zach, Kim, Stacy, Donna, those guys, they, I promise you, Gabe will attest to this, they won't let us fall off of those. They do a great job of making sure every i is dotted twice and every t is crossed and the numbers are right. So a lot of credit to them, because they do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
If there are no questions, is there a motion for approval? Thank you, Kim, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
And the motion passes 7-0. Fine arts?
Yes, you have a change order there, just needs approval. That is part of the bond, the fine arts projects that are going on. This specifically relates to a couple of things at Bitten and Central, specifically to some riggings related to safety issues and everything like that. So they identified some rigging points and stuff as they're putting the flies and everything like that. Am I saying that correctly, fine arts people? Yes, all of those things in place, and so we need to have the board approve this change order.
I'm not going to be opposed to it, as I know it needs to be done, but what does this do from a budget standpoint?
This is well within our budget.
That's all I needed, thank you.
Yep.
Are there any additional questions? If there are none, is there a motion, was that you? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Kim and Mike?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes 7-0. Okay, Dr. Segres, next one's you.
Yes, construction manager at risk. This process has been going on for a little while here. If you remember, at your November 18 meeting to meet the statute, you announced your intent to use the CMR AR process. The RFP for that was published after 11/26 to meet the seven-day threshold. It was published in the paper for two weeks, and those RFPs were due on December 9. We received four initial submissions on December 9. So those four, up to five, can be asked. We asked those four then to submit cost proposals. Those cost proposals were returned on Sept., excuse me, December 11. After reviewing those, we chose to interview all four of those firms. We have to interview at least two of those firms per the statute, but we interviewed all four. And then, so as we interviewed those and to look at how we decided, you have some paperwork there with you, and by statute, qualifications have to account for a minimum of 40% of the evaluation, and costs can only account for no more than 60%. We made it simple and went 50-50 with both, 50% qualification, 50% cost. And so you have some handouts there that show you what came in on the cost proposals. The four that we interviewed were Lear, McCown Gordon, Knapp Holtz, and SM Wilson. And Ms. Williams and Mr. Moore served as board representation on the interview committee to meet the statute there. So all the candidates were excellent. I don't think we could have had a bad partner with any of them, and it was a tough decision, but it was unanimous. The committee each scored individually, and we collected those scores before we had any conversation, and it was unanimous that all had Knapp Holtz rated as their first choice. So the recommendation from the committee is to contract with Knapp Holtz to be our construction manager at risk for the project.
Thank you, Dr. Segres. Are there any questions, board members?
Have we used them before for anything?
Again, there's not a lot of institutional knowledge with this, because we don't build a lot of things. I'm not aware of us using Knapp Holtz in the past.
Can you kind of describe, I mean, obviously, the cost is significant, but any other, I mean, we have the scoring guide, but we don't have the actual scores. So could you talk us through, like, any other?
Well, and that's the thing, is that the scores may have been different in how everybody attached those points to each one, but as far as how they came out, it was consistent that all four, everybody in the committee, had Knapp Holtz rated as first.
And they've built a high school before?
Yes, they've built several. Gabe may speak a little more to that.
Well, they're actually a partner with DLR right now in Hayes, Kansas, right? Okay.
Because that's a considerable range of prices there.
And then I can speak about the process, well, because when we were looking in the room, everyone kind of knew what they were doing except for me. And so when I looked in, I looked in kind of blind. I took a course, though, that morning in order to kind of know what I was talking about, but as we were looking at the different companies, I know that this one stuck out mainly over the experience of building brand-new high schools. It was extremely vast. And then I also liked in that they were adamant about choosing a local general contractor, is that what it's called?
Yeah, and in their interview, they've committed that, and I've verified that today, they've committed that they're going to partner with a local contractor to be a part of this, which is very similar to the process we have with DLR and with Trill Clark. And so that was important, that was an important part of their interview, I will say.
Any comments, Mike?
No, I just echo what Dr. Segres said, you know, they were all four excellent presentations. But I think it was a combination of the fact Knapp Holtz has worked with our architects already. But I think it was, uh, a combination of the fact Nabholz has worked with, uh, our, our architects already successfully. A couple of the, the, the companies had, but they certainly did. And then, um, also just their experience with projects of this size was very attractive to us. And then, um, um, also, you know, cost competitiveness. There were a couple of them that were very cost competitive. Uh, but it just so happened they scored the best and, and, uh, were the most reasonable for taxpayer dollars. So that's kind of how, how it went in my mind.
Agreed. Are there any additional questions? If there are none, I'll take a motion for approval.
So much.
Thank you, Whit. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Rhonda. Would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia? Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
No.
Ms. Miller? I mean, I'm sorry, I looked at that wrong. Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Six to one. Thank you, Dr. Seeger. Dr. Kraus?
All right, in your package, you had some job descriptions, three of them, uh, for the Parents' Teachers Program. This came to you as an information item in October and I mistakenly did not get it on the November, um, agenda, so I'm bringing it to you this month. What this would do would allow a tiered system of pay based on, um, increasing responsibilities, similar to what we do with the paraprofessionals in special education right now. This was, uh, suggested and developed, I think, by Lauren Kelly and DLR. So they're the ones who put together the criteria and developed these job descriptions. So unless there are questions, I would ask that you would, um, approve these job descriptions as presented.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. If there are no questions, if you can call the vote, please, Donna?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia? Ms. Williams?
Yes. And the motion passes? Seven zero? Dr. Kraus?
All right, also in your package, you had a, a proposed two-sixty-day work calendar for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Uh, last month you approved an academic calendar. Obviously, they, the two have to mesh and so we always pass the academic calendar first. Uh, I met with the people on the calendar committee who were two-sixty-day employees and we did a survey on an item or two with all two-sixty employees. And the resulting calendar is, um, the product of that, of that process. Does anyone have any questions about the calendar?
Can you describe the changes between last year and this year?
Um, the main difference would be that in this current, um, year for twenty-four, twenty-five, there are three additional, uh, paid days off for two-sixty staff, uh, which correlated with the academic calendar for this current year. Uh, those have been removed from the academic calendar for twenty-five, twenty-six and so we removed them from the two-sixty work calendar as well.
Are there any additional questions? If there are none, is there a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mike. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
No.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Six to one? Dr. Kraus?
All right, since, uh, two items ago, you just passed the Parents' Teachers Job Descriptions with the tiered system. The salary schedule that was presented to you, uh, has those changes incorporated into it. So it, it just, uh, supports what you did with the, um, approving the job descriptions.
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. If there are no questions, let's call the vote, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia? Ms. Miller?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Seven zero? Thank you, Dr. Kraus? Dr. Adams and Gilpin?
Okay, summer school. Dr. Gilpin's coming. Uh, I have before you a contract, a one-year contract with Catapult Learning. It's the same company that we've contracted with for several years for summer school. And so we need to get approval, um, from the board so that we can move forward with hiring and beginning to communicate summer school information to our families.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
No second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? If there are none, let's call the vote.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia? Ms. Williams?
Yes. And the motion passes? Seven zero? Okay, ladies, next.
Okay, next is, we have two things we need a decision on from you. Uh, one first would be summer school health services pay rates. And then after that is determined, we're gonna need approval on the whole summer school payroll salary. So you have both those documents at your station. I was gonna let Tammy talk about the, the need for summer school nursing.
I'll talk quietly. I have a little bit of a scratch here. So, I think you do have some information that I put together about the nursing staff. Um, with the addition of the early learning centers, we have noticed, um, an increase in the health needs that are a lot more intense for some of those children. Um, it will require nursing staff to be in the buildings and that is a change from four years ago or so. Um, I, when we started talking about summer school, the last couple of years has been really tough to staff nursing school with nurses, or nursing school, summer school with nurses. And so, um, I did put out a survey just to find out, um, if nurses plan to work summer school. Out of the twenty-six nurses, two people said yes, they plan to work. So, in my survey, my other, um, questions had to do with what would motivate you to work summer school? Um, why do you not want to work summer school? Some of it's childcare, some of it's, um, one of the perks about being a school nurse is you have the summer off. Um, but sixty-five percent said they would appreciate better pay. And if you have the document that I sent, um, I figured up the average salary and the hourly wage, um, for LPNs and RNs. Last year, none of the LPNs, uh, wanted to work. Um, we did beg one of the LPNs and he did work a partial day to help with some of our, um, sped students. And so, um, this year I anticipate that we're gonna need at least fourteen RNs and four LPNs. When you look at what they are paid throughout the school year, um, summer school, they get paid a lot, a lot less per hour. And so, um, that was why I brought the proposal to, um, Dr. Adams and Dr. Gilpin to just, um, consider increasing the nurse pay for summer school so that we can staff it for those children that want to come to summer school, um, that have health needs. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer that.
Can you take us through, so we have, is this a document that you're talking about, that how it's like the?
Yes.
So before, can you kind of take us through the document?
Sure.
Because we have, like, the RN hourly wa- wage currently is thirty-nine, fifty-nine.
That's an average.
That's, okay.
So, that's not the steps or anything like that. I took all of my RNs and their salaries and averaged their hourly wage. So they work a hundred and eighty-one days per year, seven point five hours per day.
Okay.
And that's how I got them, got to that number.
And so there, go ahead.
The summer school pay is, um, thirty dollars an hour right now. And then there was two recommendation states, one at thirty-five and one at forty. And then on the LPN, it was twenty-five and thirty and thirty-five.
Okay, and then is it, the funding mechanism is through DESI? How does that work?
Well, see, and that, that's one, that's one thing I was gonna explain at the end. I'll go ahead and explain that. So, within the summer school piece, that model is set up, it is through DESI to answer your specific question, but we set it up to make a specific amount of money. So those costs that you, when, all the costs that you incur comes right out of summer school revenue. So you make sure that you cover the expenses with the revenue. So what that would do, last year, I don't have it specifically in front of me, but we made, made approximately, uh, five hundred thousand dollars. So, if you approved the twenty-five thousand dollar expense for the nurses, then you would anticipate that you would make, now that, this is last year's and I, and so I don't know exactly what it was set up this year, but maybe Lacey and, and Lara can answer that. But yeah, you just need to, just remember it is, um, strictly just within that twenty-one or twenty-two days, all the revenue and all expenses will be taken care of. Now, one thing you have to be cognizant of is that there are a lot of different, um, job, uh, groups, um, that, you know, if you start approving to allow nurses, then, you know, you, I'm sure that you'll come back and be asked to, to, uh, look at the salaries of other ones. So, that's, that's what you have to protect yourself against.
Um, I make a motion to approve option three.
Is that, is that the one you guys are bringing to the table today or is that different?
On this document?
Yes.
So this green color is what they were paid last year.
Right.
The blue would be if you gave them a five-dollar raise.
Right.
And each, an LPN and an RN. And then the green would be if you gave them the ten, ten-dollar raise.
Understood. And are you bringing a particular recommendation or just?
We brought those, those three options for the board to decide.
Yeah. Um, I did put on my, I did put on my sheet that if we have to contract the nurses, um, what you would have to pay an LPN is a lot more on this sheet.
Okay.
In the top three categories.
That's what, uh, that's what, what you made a motion for.
So, and I'll give, I'll give an explanation of, of why I went to the highest option. Um, one, I think we should go to the highest option when we can. Um, two, though, we, we hear from weekly reports that getting nursing staff to work in the school system, they're getting paid less and it used to be a draw that come be a school nurse and you're gonna make less, but you're gonna have summers off. And that doesn't really work anymore. At least it wouldn't, or statistically, it doesn't appear to be working anymore. Um, so that's why, I understand what you're saying, that we may have to go look at other categories. I think when you make five hundred thousand dollars on summer school, you should. So, that's where my motion came from.
Well, that, and that's one note that I would make. When we first entered into a contract and Lara and Lacey can attest to this the last couple of years, when we first entered into this contract, it was about making money. Um, because when we first started this program, we needed to make a million dollars. And so that's the reason why we did it. But I specifically told them, I said, if you can make one dollar in twenty-four, twenty-five, which was last year, that's all I care about. Because it's more about the interventions that we need to closing the gap of education and academics now than making money. So I agree with you a hundred percent. As long as they're making something and not losing money, then I would agree with it.
And again, I think if we, if we need to look at compensa-, summer school compensation for staffed for all posi-, I think we should.
I have a question. I don't know if this is when I get to ask it or not, but, so I know in preschool, not all preschoolers are, only special ed children who qualify can come to preschool, summer school. So my question is, is there summer school at both early learning centers or is it just at one?
It's called, it's called something different.
Yes.
Uh, it's called extended school years.
Yes. Yes. So my, my, my question is if it's, if it's split between both buildings, if the children go to both buildings still, or?
That's interesting.
Yeah.
It, it's only gonna be out to March twenty this year.
Okay, because in my mind, yeah, I'm thinking that would, that would lessen to have them at both buildings. Is what I'm trying to say, but not saying it very well.
And many of those students that will attend require one-on-one.
Right. And that's what helps them to qualify to be able to go in the first place, so.
That's part of the issue is that we've had an increase in students that need a one-on-one nurse. And so, when you look at it that way, that's where, you know, I can't really share buildings between people and that kind of thing.
Well, that's my hope, that they're all going to the same building so we don't have just them spread out across town.
I also would like to tell you, last year we made an adjustment. So any child that had just come out of preschool was gonna be an incoming kindergartner. We call them rising K in the summer. We want to bridge and enable that kindergarten readiness as much as we can, so we allowed them to now come. So that was a new, that was a shift for our district last year. So, all those kids coming out of preschool could come to the elementary buildings.
Right. Well, and children don't just get hurt in the regular school year.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, and I think that just the concept of school nursing has changed a lot since COVID. Um, there's just a lot more intense medical needs at, at the elementary level, especially, uh, a lot more kids with diabetes and just different healthcare needs that it, it just wasn't like this before that.
Right.
So.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I do, sure.
You did. You got it.
Rhonda?
Okay.
And would you call the vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Seven zero?
Okay, so then that would. Allow us to fill in the two blanks on your summer school pay rate document of all positions. That would, that would put nurses at forty per hour and LPNs at thirty per hour. So we would ask approval for the overall summer school pay rate for all positions now.
Claire, what? You lost me.
Yeah. So this document is all positions?
I have not.
Now that we have nurses.
Oh, with the chief?
Yeah, so the nurses will go in on that at forty an hour.
Okay.
Thirty an hour for LPN.
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Dr. Seeger, do you have any, uh, hesitations or recommendations on this?
I'm the same as Gabe, you know, that if you did start to raise all of them. But again, our purpose for summer school is really, I mean, it's great that we, that helps us financially, but end of the day, we're more worried about student outcomes with that, student engagement.
Thank you, Dr. Seeger. I have a motion, a second. If there are no additional questions, would you call the vote, please, Rhonda?
Yes. Ms. Garcia? Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Seven zero. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Mr. Casey?
Good evening. So located in your board packet, excuse me, fine, a little cold here. Located in your board packet, you'll, you'll see that we've shared the results with the bidding process for the site work controls and track installation at all three high school facilities. I have along with me tonight, Mr. Jeff Ellison from Ellison Oxer Architects. Um, he's here to answer any technical questions that anyone might have as well. Um, Ellison Oxer is our hired architectural design firm for this entire project. There's been some unique aspects, uh, to the bids received and Dr. Seeger has been in contact with our attorneys regarding these. Uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Seeger to elaborate a little more.
Thanks, Casey. And I just want to shout out to Casey and Shannon Ulti. They've both done a lot of work, uh, on this process, worked a lot with Jeff Ellison and, and as we've gone through this. Um, so the bids were received. The specs and requests that went out with RFP asked companies to submit, um, a proposal for eight lanes, six lanes and six lanes uh, because of some, some size constraint issues at Lafayette and Benton. Because there's some additional work that would need to happen to accommodate eight lanes there. And then, uh, put an addendum to that of what the additional cost would be to go eight, eight and eight. Well, ATG, uh, which is, you see the far-left bid on your bid sheet, um, they only submitted an eight, eight, eight. But what they submitted, their bid was not, uh, submitted at the same specifications as what was asked for in RFP. Uh, not just the lane configuration, but also some drainage, some different things like that. And so, and, and Jeff might be able to speak more to that. But, so we reached out to the attorneys and, um, because it's not to the specifications that were in the bid, um, is there a statute one-seventy-seven, one-sixty-one? says that no bid shall be entertained by the board that's not made in accordance with the specifications and drawing furnished. And so it's our attorney's opinion that that bid can't be considered. So Midwest, Mid-America, excuse me, Mid-America Golf and Landscape was the lowest bid on the eight-six-six and then also did show the additional cost to make that an eight-eight-eight and also an eight-six-two. The eight-six-two, what it does is it creates eight lanes on the straightaway, so that you could have eight lanes for the straightaway. There's some concerns with that as we talked to staff at Lafayette and Benton in that, not sure how much that would really add. And also, when you do that, it does also impact a little bit the width of your soccer ability, your soccer configuration there. So, but they did, they did submit those. So tonight, really, the options that you have in front of you as a board, one would be to accept the Midwest, excuse me, Mid-America Golf and Landscape bid for eight at Central and six at Lafayette and Benton. And that bid amount is six million, five hundred twenty-eight thousand, sixty-four dollars, which is very close to where our budget was. Or you could accept the bid with the eight, six, and two, six, and two, which is six million, five hundred eighty-five thousand, nine hundred eighty-two. And I will tell you that we're not recommending that. Or you could accept their bid for an eight-eight-eight track. But that brings the cost to eight million, two hundred sixteen thousand, one hundred thirty-eight, which I will tell you, we do not have budget for. Okay?
Yeah, that's from six point five?
That is from six point five to eight point two. Yes.
So six point five was eight-six-six, just keeping everything the way it is?
Yes.
And then the second one?
The second one would be the six and two, six and two.
Okay. You don't wanna do that one, and the other one's too expensive anyway.
The other one is eight point two. Your third option is the board has the right to reject all bids and you could resubmit an RFP with alternate specifications. But if you do that, that's going to be in direct contrast with what our architect has recommended. Part of the additional cost, when you see that, you say, well, that's quite a big jump to go to eight lanes at those. Part of it is, there's, there's a lot of additional earthwork, some retaining walls. You have to do additional bleachers or you have to replace bleachers. So that's where it creates the additional cost. And so if you have questions, Jeff, maybe, he may be able to answer if you want technical questions about that, about making eight lanes fit into those spaces. But that, that's, that's where we're at. So those are the kind of options you have for me. I know that's probably clear as mud, but I tried to lay out what those are for you.
Can you give us the amount, can you give us those amounts again?
Sure. The, the eight-six-six from Midwest Golf and Landscape is six million, five hundred twenty-eight thousand, sixty-four dollars. The bid from them for eight, six, and two, six, and two is six million, five hundred eighty-five thousand, nine hundred eighty-two. The bid for eight-eight-eight is eight million, two hundred sixteen thousand, one hundred thirty-eight dollars. And Jeff, I hope I explained that somewhat reasonably there.
And with the eight, okay, so with the eight, six, and six, everything's pretty much staying the same. What other, it's six point five, was the total budget for that seven?
Six point four is what we had budgeted initially. But we, we have some, we have some room within some other areas I think we're gonna be okay on. And that, that doesn't keep everything the same as it did. Central is currently a six lane. That would give us an eight lane track.
Oh, okay.
And, and so we would have a track in the district then that could host district track events, things like that.
And then does that, does that include, that doesn't include stands or like what, what else was that? There was like retaining issue at Benton, maybe?
Right. So you wouldn't have to do those then. That would leave their, their stand configuration the same.
Dr. Seagres, as far as the fields on the three schools, is that still gonna be, I don't know anything about turf or the type or anything, but is that gonna be similar to what ATG, kind of what they?
Yes, the turf that, that Midwest Golf have will meet the specs that we had for that original bid on turf.
I, one of the things I'm thinking, we also need to think about the long-range plan in this big picture here somehow or another. And I don't know how, but I'm just bringing that point up, that we might wanna think about staying within the budget for sure.
Yeah, I, I will tell you, not staying within the budget is not an option.
Right. I agree.
I, I, I won't be able to find two million dollars for you to, to do that. The, the other thing too, six lane configuration with the long-range plan, if those schools become middle schools, a six lane track is what is, if you were building a new middle school today, you would build a six lane track.
Yep. So I think that's nice to down the road in our long-range plan. That would also upgrade our middle school possibilities as well.
And to have an eight lane in the meantime.
Yeah. Yeah. And the space really at Central to host big events is really only at Central in the scheme of things anyway, so. And the community uses the track at Central. And never mind, I'll save that question for later down.
And so option number one is eight-six-six.
That would, that would be, yes, that would be within what is attainable budget-wise.
And stay on budget.
Yes. Is there a motion for option one?
I'll make a motion for that option, eight-six-six, stay in budget.
Yep.
I'll second it.
Thank you. There are no additional questions? Would you call the vote please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Seven, zero? Intercom project? Mr. Jake?
Hello. So what I'm bringing you tonight is the second part of the intercom, which is wiring the buildings that have not been rewired yet through E-rate to accept the intercoms into the schools. That's Hilliard and Keatley Center for our learning centers, the two early learning centers, Mark Twain and Lake, and then six elementary schools, Hyde, Ellison, Limburg, Carden, Oak, and Pershing. So with this, we got two bids. Smart Pro came in two hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred dollars. And then Allegiant was a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. Allegiant already does all of our, has done all of our wiring for the past few years for us, so they have a good idea of what the schools are and what it takes. So our recommendation tonight, what I would like for you to do is approve the bid to Allegiant.
So moved. I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions?
Jake, do we kinda have an idea, like, like an end date when we think, when we can say, okay, they've all got this intercom system now? Is it gonna be next year?
It'll be before the start of school next year.
Okay.
Starting on Christmas. Yep.
Good question. If there are no additional questions, would you call the vote please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Seven, zero? Thank you, Mr. Drake. Up next?
Policy updates. If you looked at the information, it's just updates to make the policies in occurrence, in accordance with changes in Missouri's state law in order to keep us legal, 'cause we like that. Are there any questions?
As recommended by MSBA, correct?
Always, yes.
Thank you.
Do you wanna do these as a group?
As a group.
I mean, I make a motion to approve them.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Whitney and Kim, there are no more questions? Would you call the vote please?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Miller? Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Yes. And the motion passes? Seven, zero? Informational items. Can you, a performance report? Dr. Locke?
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that you had a hard copy of this as well. There's some additional information that I wanted to point out today that wasn't available at the time of submission. It's not shattering or anything of that nature, but nonetheless, I did wanna provide it to you. So if you wanted to go ahead and move to the next slide. This year, the St. Joe's School District achieved sixty-seven point five percent on their 2024 APR report. That's our annual performance report. That comes from all of the guidelines in M SIP six. So this is the third year of M SIP six under this new APR. So that gives us a sixty-seven point nine composite score, the way Desi scored us. So that's two point one percent from our goal of seventy percent. And again, we're just going over the highlights. Dr. McGinn has talked about this earlier. Our graduation rate increased twelve point two percent. So that was seventy-six point eight percent to eighty-nine percent. And our classification recommendations can be raised next year by Desi, so currently we're accredited. And so under the new M SIP six guidelines, that won't change until they look at us in 2025. They can raise it. They can't really raise it far above accredited. And in 2026, the classification will be ultimately determined. So in that instance, they could either raise it or lower it, and we need to achieve that seventy percent. And I'll remind you that we're two point one percent from that particular goal. We have been selected to be in cycle two of continuous improvement plan. I think I talked to you about that in our last work session, or maybe the one prior. And that we are, we've been selected to be in one of the first rounds of school districts that are undergoing cycle two. We've already been through cycle one, and that means we submitted our CSIP in December of 2022 and we received all the points for that. In this particular school year, you'll see the APR, we received an additional eight, eight points in our continuous improvement section of the APR report for our response to standards. So we'll be going through the next round is ultimately, and that will be submitted in December of next year. So that's when we'll submit that again. So if you go to the next slide, really what I'm focusing on is three-year trends. So we're looking at our trends and we're looking at our performance. So I would just remind you that the annual performance report is seventy percent how our kids are performing and thirty percent on things that we are doing as a school district in terms of continuous improvement and compliance. So if you look at the first graph, the first year of this particular report, we were at sixty-seven point five percent. Then in the next year, we went to sixty-three point two, and then this year, we're back at roughly about the same mark. But our continuous improvement scores have continued to go up as we've moved through this process. And by all accounts, that would signal that our performance should continue to follow in accordance with that. So if you look at the next particular slide, you can see again, sixty-seven point six last year. We fell to sixty-three point two, and then we're back at sixty-seven point five. So that, that's really not much of a trend, but it does show that we have come back to where we started. And I would remind you that 2021, 22 school year used three years of data. Every year subsequent to that particular school year has only used one year of data. So 2021, 22 would account for some post-pandemic growth that the other years wouldn't necessarily account for. And in addition to that, most statisticians would tell you it's better to use three years of data than one. But that's, you know, we play the calls, we don't call the plays in that particular instance. So if you look at the next particular slide, this shows you our comparison set. I think that you may recall when I provided you our balance scorecard. Again, that's been maybe a month or two ago that we went over our balance scorecard. We have a comparison set, and that comparison set is based on a variety of factors. And we use a particular method to select that comparison set. So it really doesn't do us much good to compare ourselves to, to school districts that aren't and some of the, don't have some of the same challenges we do. We call that, we wanna be the best in class, and so that's our comparison set. And so you can see for some of, of those folks, they improved. Some of those folks didn't improve, but we are just kind of hanging steady. And as Dr. Edgar says, we're not there yet, and so we know that, and so we're gonna continue to work on that. Do you have any questions about this particular slide? So if you look to the next slide, what you'll see is, I'm going to show you more specifically our schools' APR reports, because our schools all get an APR report. And as you can imagine, all of their scores roll up into being the district's score. So for example, you can see where Benton is, where Central is, and where Lafayette is. And just as a reminder, these are the percents that these, these schools have attained on their APR reports. Okay, if we wanna move to the next slide, middle school APR trends. So again, when you're looking at trends, you're looking at how you're doing over time. Bodie has obviously a positive slope. Rubidoo has not had a positive slope. Spring Garden is holding steady. Truman, more of a negative slope. So if you look at our elementary schools, again, I don't need to point out to you what is a negative or positive slope, but you can see that we've had some that are definitely improving and some that are not improving as much. I would take a moment and certainly point out that we've had some elementary schools that improved over thirty percent. Coleman, for example, improved dramatically. Hosea has improved dramatically. Hyde improved dramatically. Limburg made a lot of gains this year. And so, and Pershing in particular, made a lot of gains this year, as did Scaith from one to two years. They moved up. So those are, those are definitely positive things, and what this shows is it can be done. It just is something that has to be done through a very intentional framework. And I think some of our elementary schools and middle schools and high schools are working towards that ends through their school improvement plans. So if you wanted to go to the next slide, this kinda shows you what's behind those scores. So this is mathematics. These are proficiency trends, and, and this is for three years. So the arrows that you see on 2024, they show you the trend, the three-year trend. And again, I, I go back to the point I iterated earlier was that three years of data is most likely a better way to assess performance than a, than one year. So again, that's what we're looking at. So we definitely had some gains in some areas in mathematics. So we definitely had some gains in some areas in mathematics. If you want to go to the next slide. In English Language Arts, we had some two-year gains, but if we look at the overall three-year trend, we're not yet where we want to be in terms of English Language Arts. So if you look at science, in science, we are seeing more movement in a positive direction. Biology, you wouldn't really call that a trend from twenty-four point three to twenty-four point seven. That's not much of a trend. So we've made some, some gains in, in science in terms of a three-year trend. And then if you look at government, we've seen a decline in our, in our government proficiency over the course of three years. And this slide may not be on the, the particular report, but for those of you that have the hard copy that I sent out, I would like to point out one thing in particular. We have received some information from another school district, and I think Dr. Eggers and McGinnis will tell you that I have studied very much the DESI growth model. It comes out of the University of Missouri Econ Department. And it is a difficult model to understand, yet it makes up forty-eight points of the two hundred points that are allowable on this APR report. And so it's very important that as a school district, if we set a target that we know how we're progressing throughout the school year, as any organization would want to know if it sets goals, whether it's financial or otherwise, how they're progressing through the school year with regard to that target, especially when it's a high-value target. And so with the DESI growth model, that's very hard for us to do internally. Corey Morris, who is out of Jake Kelly's office, who is an analyst. He and I spent the better part of Friday morning going over a lot of spreadsheets to better understand this model. And what we came up with is a lot of school districts this year were awarded maximal amount of points that in previous school districts, in previous years weren't. Because instead of a continuous award of growth points, as if the district had a growth point fingerprint, if you will, they really developed four different buckets for which school districts could fall into. And based on a lot of, you know, statistical gymnastics, school districts fell into one of those four buckets. So school districts could have made more growth and gotten less points, or they could have made less growth and gotten more points. And so I just wanted to, I'm not editorializing, but I am showing, I am certainly telling you the facts of what we saw. So we do have concerns going forward for the volatility of that particular model in terms of what we might see on our APR. Everything else, we, we know ahead of time what's going to happen, and we know where we are as we move through the school, the school year. This model is just harder to track, and it doesn't track with our internal model. And you can see that based on what I have right here, and that's just a very simple graph, that, you know, we made a significant point gains in 2022, and that changed dramatically in 2023. And then it flipped in 2024 in terms of the content. So just something that, just something to keep in mind as we move forward, that we are definitely keeping our eye on, and we're tracking to the best of our ability. But it is a significant, significant factor that I just wanted folks to be aware of. And again, not editorializing, giving you the facts for which we spend a lot of time looking at. And to that end, just would be happy to entertain any questions that you might have. And all of us are here to answer those questions that are in the academic services team.
Thank you. I love talking about that performance stuff. I sure appreciate it, and I know you have to dig hard to get it and make sense, try, try to have us understand. Hey, back to the very first slide that you showed. Is it as simple as, did I hear you say, we, we need to grow the composite score to seventy percent by twenty-six?
Yes.
Or lose accreditation?
Provision, what they're saying right now, that would be provisionally accredited, so you wouldn't lose accreditation.
Okay.
So I'm gonna, I don't, I don't want anyone to, to take this as blame. You know, these are not, these are difficult scores, and I think it's difficult. I think we need to have some conversations that are somewhat difficult. But I see that in comparison to our comparison group, we're lower. We haven't had the growth that some of these comparison groups have had. And so obviously, the C SIP is important. Are there any other trends or issues or resources that are needed? I mean, I, I understand the need for resources, I get that. But what, what, what is your all's takeaway when you've received this?
I mean, obviously, we're not where we want to be, but the difficult part is the growth model because we can't predict it. We've asked DESI, we've asked our regional rep, and we can't get answers as to how that is calculated. So while we may not look like we have growth with our comparison sets, there's areas where we have had more growth, but just weren't awarded the points. We have two, two school districts, just to underscore that. And again, this is just factual information. We have two, not school, two school districts, two schools, sorry. Oak Grove and Spring Garden made tremendous growth in math, like ten percent gains in their proficiency. But yet they were not awarded growth points. And so that left us scratching our heads. And so again, while that's not everything, it is something. And so we are taking a hard look at that for some of our, some of our areas in terms of how can we better predict and exceed in that, in that particular area? Because all other factors on this APR, you, you have to get your status and your growth points in ELA in math. And if you don't, you're, you're, you can, you can try for all the other areas. Attendance is worth four points. These other areas are forty-eight points. So, and these are the goalposts. We're not complaining about that. We're just trying to analyze how we can better get across that. And those were two instances that we saw that made us really want to dive deeper into the data and better understand it.
And I think my, I think where, and tell me if I'm wrong in, in this analysis. The part that has me the most concerned or that I draw to is the performance score, not as much the continuous improvement score, if that makes sense. And I know that's obviously harder to achieve. But is there any, I, I think, Dr. McGinnis, last time you had talked about having our more tenured staff doing more of the, the different coursework and the, the general coursework.
That's hilarious, which, that's a discussion that we've had. But that growth model that we're talking about is also in that seventy percent bucket. So is graduation rate. And so when I talked about that earlier, that's why I provided you guys those cut scores. Those are the strategies we are looking at now. Where do we need to go to get the maximum points? And we were so close. I mean, I think we were two percent away from getting five additional points. And then we would have been over seventy percent had we hit that with graduation. So just know that we are looking at this with a fine-tooth comb and going through all of our data, looking at those cut scores. I think it falls back to making sure we have good tier-one instructional practices in the classroom that we're teaching bell-to-bell. So I know Dr. Gilpin and Dr. Adams and I, we are constantly in classrooms and providing feedback with our principals and our teachers. But at the end of the day, the, the growth model is where we are getting hung up because we just can't predict it, and it doesn't make sense. And we're not in that boat alone. Other school districts have the same situation, which is why we've been kind of networking with some other leaders throughout Missouri who have similar battles.
Do you, so this is not a rip on alternative certified staff, because I'm married to one. But do we have a higher percentage of that compared to other districts, or about the same, or do you know?
Yes, and actually, if you remember over the summer when we did the retreat, I had a slide on there that showed for the state. DESI provided that to us. And then I had Heather Adams in HR crunch those numbers for our district. So it's on that slide on board docs that shows that yes, we have just a little bit more than the average.
Are there any additional questions? It's a lot of information. I do appreciate all of your work.
Thank you, Dr. La.
A lot to think about. Parents' Teachers, Lauren Kelly.
Good evening. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak with you today about this remarkable research study. Hopefully, you guys have a copy of it in front of you. In November 2024, Parents' Teachers celebrated forty years of providing support to parents, monitoring child development, and identifying potential areas of concern, preventing child abuse and neglect, and promoting school readiness. Coinciding with this anniversary, there was a research study published in the Early Childhood Research Quarterly in November 2024. So that's what I'm going to talk to you about. It was a sizable study with over thirteen thousand children participating across twenty-eight of Missouri's five hundred sixteen school districts. This study looked at the number of home visits that these children receive through participation in the Missouri Parent Education Program, which is the, the same model that we implement here in the St. Joseph's School District. And then they looked at these same children's ELA and math scores on their third-grade math test. The study found that the number of family personal visits was positively associated with third-grade math and ELA proficiency. Compared to children who had four or fewer visits, children who had five to twelve visits and children, and children who had thirteen or more visits were more likely to be proficient in math. The likelihood of math achievement proficiency increased by two-point-six percentage points for those who had five to twelve visits and three-point-seven percentage points for those who had thirteen or more visits. And in English Language Arts, compared to children with four or fewer visits, ELA achievement proficiency increased by four-point-four percentage points for those who had five to twelve visits and four-point-seven percentage points for those who had thirteen or more visits. So this study is noteworthy, noteworthy for several reasons. First, it's a relatively large study that examines associations between variation in parent education participation and later academic outcomes using a parent education program that is universally available to all Missouri families. Second, it is one of the few parent education studies that has examined developmental period of exposure as well as the total number of family visits. Third, the models included an extensive set of conceptually relevant control variables, including child, parent, and family characteristics gathered during program participation, and third-grade child characteristics and school level and district level characteristics, including enrollment, average years of teacher experience, and community population size. Finally, given that early childhood intervention field is dominated by programs that target at-risk families and children, the positive results from a large sample of children that included all income strata and ability levels provides evidence that a universal program can confer benefits to children from a wide range of family backgrounds. The findings also have clear policy implications. More home visits are positively associated with child academic achievement in third grade, which we know follows kiddos through to, beyond third grade. Families, family visits appear to support parents and children in substantive ways that can boost child, a child's later academic achievement. And so to sum it up, the more home visits, the better. I want to thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
How many parent educators do you have right now?
I have ten. There are seven full-time and three part-time, myself, seven developmental screeners, and a part-time administrative assistant. Good team. Anything else? Thank you to the board for all your support, and I appreciate it very, very much. Have a good evening.
I appreciate your time. Thank you. Dr. Kraus.
All right. The next item is an employee handbook edition. This is an information item. The employee handbook is not approved by the board. The section that I gave you in your materials is on class coverage. There's nothing different in here from what we've been doing, but it's simply putting it in writing in the handbook so that's more accessible to, to others to know. Basically, we, we make every attempt that we can to get a substitute for every teacher who's gone. Often, we're not able to do that. At the elementary level, if, if classes are split, and there's at least eight kids split into two groups, those teachers receive an additional twenty dollars per hour. At the secondary level, typically, it'll manifest itself in terms of a teacher taking on another class during his or her planned time. They get twenty dollars per hour for that. In rare, rare instances, let's say I'm teaching Algebra I first hour, and the biology room next, right next to me doesn't have a teacher, I might end up with both of those. But that's very, very rare. So again, there's no, no change to our practice. It's simply putting it in writing and putting it in the employee handbook. Are there any questions? Okay, the, the next item is mine as well. It's a, I wanted to talk with the board about RFP for debt collection. We have a number of instances. The ones that I'm most familiar with are with the Grow Your Own Program and the Pathway to Teaching. People that we take into, that are selected for those programs receive taxpayer money basically for college tuition reimbursement. Not reimbursement, they're just giving them money, which they use for college tuition. They also sign a contract that says if they don't meet the requirements of the program that they're required to pay back the taxpayer money that they've been funded with. We've had a number of instances now, I think we have about twenty thousand dollars in outstanding debt that we've been unable to collect. And I visited with our attorney about it, and she suggested that the most cost-efficient way to recoup some or all of the money was to have a collection agency work for you. So the document in your packet is for an RFP that would be sent out to anyone who's interested in applying to be our vendor for collections. It's an information item now, and unless I hear otherwise, I will bring it back to you next month for approval. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Dr. Kraus, of that twenty thousand, and I know it can probably vary, but I mean, is that split up between like ten people who still owe? Is it twenty people? Is it two? Like, do we know about how many?
Typically, it's in two thousand dollar increments because that's in both of those programs. That's what the participants receive per semester. So in this particular case, it is eight people.
I, I have a question. So as they're receiving this money along the way, they're not held accountable to give you transcripts to check and see?
Yes. We, we have a fairly lengthy list of things that they have to fulfill. They have to maintain a certain grade point average. They have to be progressing toward a degree on a regular basis. At the end of every semester, they send us their transcript from the previous semester and their enrollment for the following one.
And so it's not in the, I mean, I wouldn't expect it to be an RFP, but what would you expect to be the amount that we're going to be able to recoup? Like, like what would the fee be or percentage? Is there like a standard percentage that they're going to take?
I, I don't know that there's a standard percentage. Dr. Seakers, do you have any idea?
Yeah, that, that'll be the main thing that we need to find out.
You know, if they say, well, y'all, we're taking eighty percent, and you can have twenty, it wouldn't.
It'll be good to have us in place if there's anything else additionally. I mean, sometimes there are other things that we might need to collect, something off the business office too.
I don't know if it's standard or not, but if you look at the collections that we have with Medicaid, they, they took a thirty percent, so.
Are there any additional questions?
Are there any additional questions? Okay, Dr. Kraus?
All right. The next one is four job descriptions for the Adult Education Program. They are, several of them are revisions and several of them are new positions, mostly at the correctional facility. If you remember, AEL operates under a grant structure, so whatever they're paying out has to fit within their grant. And these job descriptions would not make any change to that. The people who would be hired under these positions would fall under their grant allotted funding. It's an information item this time, and hopefully next time we'll bring it back for your approval. Are there any questions about these?
These are new, Dr. Kraus? They don't exist today? Is that the deal?
Some of, two of them do, and they're revisions, and then the administrative assistant, one I believe is at the prison, and another part-time position that will work there as well.
Okay, Dr. Kraus? Dr. Seakers?
Yes, the EverGee Business Demand Response Program. If you remember earlier this year, you approved for us to be a part of that. And what that is, is when commercial customers, if there are high load or high demand days, EverGee will ask businesses in this program to reduce their electrical load. And as we are getting more and more buildings that have automated systems in them, this is something we're able to do. Usually, these days will come during the summer. A school district is a very good employee, our customer usually to do this, because if those demand days come in July, we don't have a hard time cutting back on our load at that time. So last year, it just so turned out that the three biggest days were the first three days of school, of course. So this year, I've listed the buildings that we participated in, a few more this year than last. But there were only four event days this year. So EverGee did a good job of managing their loads, and we didn't have maybe the extreme temperatures on some days that we had last year. But in four event days, we are getting back $7,658.56, which is quite a bit, a little bit more than last year where we had seven event days. So just wanted to report that to you. That was our results from being in that program this year. It's a learning curve for our people too, so we're figuring out how to curtail those loads better and how to manage those automated systems so that we can do that. So we'll probably come back to you again and ask a good part of that program again next year. There's no risk to us, and if it's a day that, for example, students are in school and we can't reduce, there's no penalty if we don't reduce as well.
Thank you, Dr. Seakers. Okay, Bond Project update?
Yes, Bond Project update. There's not really very much going on right now. That is sarcasm, in case you didn't pick that up. There's a lot going on right now. The athletic fields and tracks, obviously, we talked about that earlier tonight, so that's going to start to move pretty quickly here. The Hosea addition, they are putting structural steel on for the roof right now, and they should have the deck on by Christmas, so that will be all weathered in, so they can continue to work there, and that is definitely on schedule to be completed in April at this time. The road projects, Carden Park, they actually started moving dirt there today. So if you're going to go see some heavy equipment, you can drive up by Carden Park and see some of that. Oak Grove, the survey work has been done, and project design is underway with architects right now. Again, that project will start after school is out this year. Sidewalks, you should have bids to you in January for Pickett and Parkway. And survey work has been completed at Spring Garden, so that's starting to process there as well. Intercom Systems, you've got a little bit of that from Jake tonight, again, some additional there with the cabling. But installation is going to begin over Christmas, and so we'll start to see those going into some buildings. I believe Parkway is the one they're starting with. Is that correct, Jake? They'll start that over Christmas, and so that will go on a building by building. But again, with the intent that those will all be completed by the start of school next year. Fine Arts upgrades, they're going to be removing the risers, the permanent risers in rooms over Christmas. I got a long, detailed list of where curtain installation is going to occur, where stage work is going to happen over the next 10 months or so. So there's a definite plan and moving forward on that right now. A lot of activity going to happen there very soon. HVAC, Schneider's in the design process to give us options at different buildings as we're looking at that. So that's continuing to go on. And then science and technology upgrades, we're starting to receive equipment. I should have Stacia Studer just read her email, because it's always so much happier for her than my voice is. But we are in phase one of getting those STEM resources in for staff. First phase, it's being organized, we're getting asset tags done, and there's been a lot of collaboration. Victoria Mueller did a lot of work here in the district, but there's also been collaboration with Desi, Susan Gurman, who leads curriculum instruction state level, and our teachers to make sure what we're getting, those resources align with support and effective teaching and learning. We also want to make sure we're providing some support and some development for staff. We don't want to buy a bunch of equipment and them not really understand how to use it and it's set on a shelf. So we are working through that, but we are going to start to see materials in classrooms or in buildings within the next few weeks, so an exciting time there. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the Bond Project, but lots of good things are happening all over the district right now.
Can you, so I'm sure I, like many of you, got some concerns about Central's heat recently. Can you talk about where that's at and how it's not going to be a problem anymore?
Well, so there was a steam valve that was an issue in one part of the building, and that was a part that had to be ordered. That's not part of what's being worked on right now, part of their HVAC. Obviously, that will be completed though over the summer. So yeah, it's one of the reasons we're happy to move away from that to more modern HVAC in buildings. But yeah, that was an issue, that was an isolated issue with the steam valve. And actually, Casey, if I'm correct, it was only an issue. It was not an issue for near as long as social media let it to believe. It was only.
Four classrooms.
Yeah, four classrooms.
Just wanted to give you an opportunity to talk to it.
No, absolutely. We're happy to put the factual information out there. So again, with steam heat, that's what we're dealing with in a lot of buildings. We have occasional areas that will be down in some parts. I know we had some reports in buildings that there were classrooms that didn't have any heat, and it wasn't the classroom didn't have any heat, it had been turned down for a little bit while some maintenance was going on. So, you know, we'll continue to work through those issues and everything, but we want to do the maintenance so that we don't have permanent issues. But again, Casey and his team do a great job, and we're happy to always answer any questions. And if there are concerns, man, we want to deal with them for sure. Still me, right? Direct service cost report? All right. Gabe actually kind of alluded to this a little bit ago. Through direct service claiming, we can obtain Medicaid reimbursement for health-related services that we provide to students in some of our special education who are also enrolled in Medicaid programs. And so we've utilized Fairbanks LLC to identify and recover this, these dollars. We were missing out on a lot of reimbursement dollars years ago. And so Dr. Edgar implemented this a few years ago last year, and it's always, it always comes a year behind as the reporting goes in. So for '21, '22, we received $323,000, just a little over that. This year, we're receiving $385,738.11. So we've received just a little bit over $1.5 million in reimbursement since we started to do that. So it's been definitely worthwhile in contracting with them to do that. So just wanted to share with you what the results were for this year.
Thank you, Dr. Seakers. Hey, Dr. Edgar.
Okay, the attendance report, I won't talk a whole lot about it, because Dr. McGinnis alluded to that earlier in her report, but as you can see, we did go down just a little bit. As of December 6, we were at 84.88. We're still in a good place, but we'll see what brings for the next month. Typically, January is a little bit lower, so I would anticipate that it might even take one more dip. And then we're hoping that we can start going back the other direction because of the sick season and a lot of the things that come with that, holidays, and there's just a lot of reasons for people to be gone. Those are any questions in regards to that? Okay, the next document is the Vision Forward Process. And at the end of the Vision Forward Process, I'm going to turn it over to DLR and LJ Hart, and they're going to talk about the Long Range Plan. But I just wanted to, if you guys remember, some of you were on the board at the time. Some of you took a part in the Vision Forward Process. A little over four years ago, the school district began a vision forward process, and I thought it would be a good opportunity for us just to kind of talk about what we've seen come out of that. And there's really a lot more progression than I even think about unless, until you sit down and write it down. So priority number one was improving district culture. We have Community Connection and Engagement Committee to promote district through the lens of the bond dollars. The Foundation, the Community Groups, School Showcase Increase through social media. The Graduate Profile is another one of the committees, which will be launched in fall of 2025. And the Climate and Culture Improvements major through the gallop in retention of the staff. Priority two, highlighted high-quality staff, coaching and mentoring programs for new teachers, competitive salaries. You know, thanks to this Board of Education, you have made a lot of strides in regards to that. And alignment of professional development district goals, professional learning communities, and the National Board Certified Cohort. Priority three and four, student performance and wellbeing in pre-K through 12. You know, I think this is probably one of the things that should be highlighted the most is obviously the expansion of early learning. We've made a lot of strides in early childhood education over the last four years. The expansion of Hillier Technical Center is obviously something to be very proud of, and I would anticipate that in the near future, we'll be talking about another expansion to that current facility. Culture of Teaching and Learning, pre-K through 12 PD focus has been PLC, which I think is, you'll see that there will be some progress made. Alignment of Standards and Curriculum, Professional Development Resources and Assessments. Model classrooms, which are showing great success. You guys saw some numbers with Lindbergh earlier. And so I think a lot of that stuff is starting to connect. We wish we could have them in every building, but obviously, it becomes a financial strain. And so we are in the process of talking about a system restructure, and those are the decisions that we're going to have to make on what does the system need to look like for '25, '26. Secondary realignment for math pathways and science coursework. Mastery Connect formative predictive platforms for the secondary. Attendance focus, you obviously hear about that all the time, but with the collaboration with local agencies. Behavior support with the Alternative School, we've made a lot of changes. We're really concentrating on early intervention with the behaviors, and we're hoping to see progress with that soon in the reset rooms at the elementary sites. Before I turn it over to you guys, you guys go ahead and come to the podium, I suppose, and then I would just entertain any questions you guys might have regarding priority one through four. And then I'll turn it over to them to highlight where we're at as far as Long Range Plan is concerned with facilities.
I'll just kind of share. Kevin Greshar and Mike Fahey are here from DLR, and then Terry Clark from Creel Clark. That's the architects that we've contracted with working on the possible new high school project. So they've been doing a lot of work on this, have been trying to come up with programming with input from the Long Range Committee and kind of give us a schematic as we move forward through this process. So that, I'll turn it over to them.
Can we go back to Vision Forward for two seconds? So on the priority five facilities plan, we do have, so we have a Long Range Plan, but we also have all the bond issue items from this year. Can we bring this back periodically? Like, can we put this on the calendar like quarterly? I just feel like we've done so much of it, and we're working towards so much of it. And we constantly talk about how we get plans, and we put them on shelves, and we never revisit them. And so I'm glad that we're revisiting it now, but I think for people to see, and for us to see that we're continuing to work towards things.
Yeah, I definitely think that that is a reasonable request, and so we'll just go ahead and put it on the agenda for March right now and give you another update at that time. There will be a lot of bond issue stuff too that will be hopefully in the works at that time.
Well, I am Kevin Gresher, and I wanted to just thank Robert and Gabe for really giving us the opportunity. We've put a lot, or asked a lot of this Long Range Planning Team, and I think they've all chipped in and given us a lot of information. We've basically taken about a month and a half here to get to this point, and the intent of tonight was to give you some of the first information that we've drawn out of that group, just so that we can start a little bit of this conversation so you see this in earnest right now. And so I'm going to let Mike really talk about where we're at in this test fit, so.
Thank you, guys. My name is, again, Mike Fahey, also with DLR Group. So just really excited for the opportunity to work with our partners at Creel Clark and all of you guys to hopefully bring this next phase of your educational experience for your students to life. So what we've done to date so far is we've started to really evaluate what kind of program your, you know, your educators are desiring for your students, and start to translate that into a square footage and also a site development. So what we're coming up with right now is that you need about a 242,000-square-foot building to facilitate all of the different elements that you've kind of identified and shared with us. And then we also are in understanding that you guys want to have a, potentially a pathway-based learning environment. And so we've also had many conversations about the different types of site elements that you'd like, the different sporting facilities and fine arts facilities and things. And so what we've done to date so far, there's a lot that we don't know, but what we do know, we've tried to put to paper. And so we've looked at a few different site options. This site that you see in front of you is a somewhat generic site option. It assumes a relatively square-proportioned site that's a minimum of 80 acres, which is typically what we're seeing for modern-day high schools. You can do high schools on less land, but 80 acres is kind of the amount of land that allows schools to grow at the best right now. So when you're building a new building, that's kind of what you're trying to identify. The more land, the better. And some of the different sites that we have looked at all had kind of a common feature where they tended to have something in the middle of the site that made that middle part of the site a little less developable. So for this test fit, we've assumed a site where you want to keep the development around the edges. We've assumed that this site might only have access from one side. If a different site is chosen and has more access from other sides, that's great. If a site's bigger or has different land features, that's great too. But we wanted to get in front of you something to help you understand the, how the vision is developing and what a building might look like on a site here in St. Joe. So for this particular site, we assume that you can only access the site from the west side. So we always want to have at least two points of entry, so you can see the two points of entry coming off of the street to the west. We've assumed approximately 800 to 900 parking spots. We've assumed a 242,000-square-foot building that would be two stories. Two-story high schools are typical these days. You can do them three stories. We do do them three stories at times, but most of the districts we work with tend to want to keep them to two. And then we've also had provisions for a potential performing arts center, a potential competition football and soccer stadium with grandstand seating, some practice facilities, a secondary competition field for soccer, all of the Olympic sports, the track and field, the shot put, discus, all those things. A third practice field for just shared athletics, a competition tennis court facility, and then as well as baseball and softball on the site. So those are the different bits and pieces that you're seeing on the site here. We have an understanding that right now, your district contracts with the city for some of those sports facilities, and so there might be opportunities to continue those contracts. There might be opportunities to bring those onsite, and those are the types of conversations that we'll be developing over. that we'll be developing over the next several, several months as we gear towards the bond vote. So, um, a little more specifics about what you're seeing on the building here. Again, this is just a test fit, but, uh, what we're showing now is that you'd have a central point of entry that's at that kinda smaller square bit. I wish I had a mouse that I could point to different parts of the screen, but I don't. I apologize. So where there's the gray arrow that enters the building, that would be the front door. Um, you'd be entering into a commons area at the second floor of this building. Uh, this particular site slopes down toward the middle. And so you'd be entering at the second floor and then looking down into your commons below and that would be a double height space. The commons could serve multiple purposes. Um, it'd be primarily dining for the students as well as a pre-function space for your competition indoor gymnasium. And, uh, and it would be kinda the heart of the school. To the north of that box and the, in the larger, larger rectangle there, that would be shared services for the school. So that would be your administration. It would be your, your kitchen, your servery, uh, the different, oh, appreciate that. We'll see if that shows up. Yeah, it does. Okay, great. So this, uh, this box here is the one I'm speaking of. So that would be, uh, your, like I said, it would be your administration, maybe a black box theater, uh, your competition gym, your auxiliary gym, uh, mechanical suites. They, just things that are kinda shared by all the students and not specific to any one particular group of students. And then going down to the south, uh, we, we're showing just kinda generically four different boxes of educational suites. And so each of those would be geared towards one of the identified educational pathways. And then, uh, there's a little link between them. And, and so we would potentially develop some architectural expressions where there are collaboration spaces where students who are in these different pathways do have opportunities to work together, collaborate, have some, um, kinda informal collisions and, uh, sharing some of their knowledge, so. Moving around, uh, this piece here is a performing arts center. So, uh, right now we've identified, uh, potential for maybe about an eight hundred seat performing arts center that would have the, the fly house and all of the different, um, elements to a performing arts center, uh, as a piece. And we, we have intentionally separated that out from the rest of the building because, for two reasons really. Performing arts centers often want to have their own kind of architectural, architectural identity because a lot of those events happen after hours. You wanna make sure that from a wayfinding standpoint, your community knows what, which part of the building that is. Um, and also they can, sometimes they, the, just the architecture of them can be different and special. Um, we've included an event parking space back here that would serve nighttime events at the performing arts center, but it would also serve the football stadium and some of the other, uh, athletic venues. And then coming around here, there's a service lane that comes into the backside of the building. So here you could have shipping and receiving for the performing arts center as well as for kitchen and just general building. Um, we know that you have a, uh, you're really proud of your ROTC program in the, in, in this district. And so, uh, we're showing this kind of circuitous walking path around. There's a lot of heavy, heavy trees in the central portion of all the, the sites we've looked at. And so from a wayfinding and navigation skill, skill development standpoint for your ROTC program, the site lends itself to that as well. Um, trying to think of other elements that we've approached. There's a lot of, a lot of thought that goes into these types of things, as you might imagine. Um, in this particular test fit, uh, and really for all of the different sites we've looked at, there is a, a common challenge of not having direct access to public utilities. And so, uh, we have, no matter what site we choose, we will definitely, uh, be intentional about the way we cite the building. On this particular site, the access to public sewer is only to the north side of the building. And so that's one of the reasons why we've, uh, located the building in the northwest corner because we would need to connect out to public sewers to the north and that can be a costly part of any project. So those types of decisions are things that we will continuously evaluate, uh, as decisions are made. Uh, and now that we know that we have an official construction partner on board in Nabholz Construction, some of the numbers that I'm gonna share with you moving forward in the, this slide and the next, uh, are, these are things that we have internally as architects, we, we have a maybe better understanding than most about how these things, the cost of these things. Uh, but we are not construction estimators and so Nabholz is. And so starting on Wednesday, we're gonna invite them to our office and start really putting notes on the paper and making sure that we, uh, have been accurate in our rough order of magnitude math. And, uh, hopefully we've been a little bit conservative and some of these numbers might come down. So one of the things that we've identified is for all of the different program, uh, programmatic elements that we've spoken about, we've come up with a, like I said, hopefully conservative rough, rough order of magnitude budget of about a hundred and eighty-six million dollars if we did absolutely everything the way that we would love to do it. Uh, we also understand that your bonding capacity in this district is, doesn't, doesn't reach a hundred and eighty-six million nor do you necessarily want to go to a full bonding capacity. And so, um, the conversations we've heard is that you wanna preferably settle in at around the hundred and fifty million dollar mark. Not sure if that's an official decision yet. It's just part of the conversations that we've been having. And so I do wanna say that we can, we feel confident that we can get you a wonderful building with most of the bits and pieces that you've requested at that hundred and fifty million dollar mark or somewhere in that vicinity of plus or minus. Uh, but there will be some back and forth that we will have with you, with Nabholz, uh, with your community, with your educators, determining what the right decisions are to get us down into that range because we know that one hundred and eighty-six is, is not where we need to be. So what this diagram shows is, is some of those different elements. Um, the building, we think at, at, at two hundred and forty-two thousand square feet, at approximately, I think the number is about five hundred and ten dollars per square foot is what construction estimation is coming in at these days, plus fees and things. We, we've allocated a, an approximate one hundred and thirty-three million dollars to just the educational facility and the indoor athletics facilities. Um, it could be a potential additional twelve to fourteen million to do the performing arts center. Um, let's see, the, we've assumed that the track and turf football field would be base budget, but then adding the twenty-five hundred seat grandstand could add a potential four to six million or subtract if you're starting at the one eighty-six. Um, other different, other types of decisions that could have budget implications are, um, for the practice fields. Uh, grass practice field generally comes in around a million dollars. A turf practice field generally comes in around two million dollars. Again, those are rough numbers, but those are the types of decisions, grass versus turf, that we will be helping you determine what your priorities are so we can bring some of these costs down. Um, the tennis facility, uh, five hundred thousand could get you approximately four practice style courts, whereas a million dollars could get you six competition courts with lighting. And the baseball facility, two and a half million might be able to get you a practice baseball field and a practice softball field, whereas four and a half million might get you competition facilities with turf, with lighting, with dugouts, uh, with batting cages, those types of things. And then, uh, one, one element of any project is parking. Parking is actually quite expensive. So if we determine that your district can do with fewer parking spots, we've kind of identified this entire southern lot here that's two hundred spots, two hundred parking stalls that if you could either do a gravel lot or you could just reduce the overall parking by those two hundred stalls or some factor of two hundred and save significant money by making a decision like that. So.
Yeah, one of the things, you wanna talk about project costs?
Sure.
Soft costs, hard costs?
Yeah, so, um, the, all of these numbers that we're showing you, we try to maintain consistency in talking about overall project costs when we talk to school boards because that's the number that you guys really care about. That's the all-in cost. What's it gonna cost the school district to get to this? These are not construction dollars. Construction dollars are, um, are less. And then to get from construction to project cost, you add in things like fees, um, FF and E, those types of things. And so, um, five hundred, I mentioned five hundred to five hundred and ten is kind of where construction costs are settling in right now. Those numbers then go up by fifteen to twenty-eight percent to determine, uh, depending on things like design fees, construction fees, FF and E, technology, those types of things get you, get you to higher budgets. So we, we're trying to show you now all-inclusive numbers so that you're not hit with surprises on the backend and end up having things cost more.
Can you, what was the item to the north? Is that parking right there to the north of the football field?
This here?
Nope, to the right.
Uh, that, uh, yes, I, thank you. I glossed over that. That is, uh, that is a outbuilding that would be at the two million dollar level. It would be maybe bathrooms and concessions or bathrooms and storage. And then up closer to four million, the idea is that maybe we could get you remote, um, locker rooms so that your students don't have to gear up in the building and then walk over to the facilities that can have their, um, pads and things stored closer to the facility. It's a lot of information, I know.
We thought this was a, this was the opportunity for us to bring this to you. We're excited about getting involved with the CM because we can start talking about real hard costs. And so, um, the important thing was at least to bring you something that you know, that we've programmed. We've put together some numbers. It is like a lot of the high schools that we've done, the square footages that you see, so. Any other questions?
So the hundred and fifty million would put us at the forty-two cents or the forty-one cents?
Well, that's, that's your segueing just perfectly next, uh, because we.
It's not pre-planned.
We have, uh, Neil Branham and John Reinhart are here from LJ Hart. And they will talk a little bit about, uh, kinda what your question was right there with me.
Yeah, so, uh, John's gonna pass out. I have a, a few handouts to look at as far as cost, what that means to taxpayer dollars, um, some other comparables. So, um, I'll wait for him to pass that out before I kinda start to look at it. Okay, um, on the front page there, exhibit one kinda goes through, uh, three different sizes of, of bond issues. Uh, we had the one thirty, a hundred and fifty million and then a hundred and seventy million. And basically we, we had done this back, I think, uh, late in the summer. Uh, as to how you get to those amounts, uh, again, I'll just kinda focus on the one fifty, seeing that is that the, that's the middle ground. Um, that would be in April of twenty-five election. Again, that's a four-seventh majority needed, uh, fifty-seven point one-four percent. Uh, half of that would be split to be sold in twenty-twenty-five and then the other part to be in twenty-twenty-six. We have those right now, tentatively seventy million and eighty million. And then on that far right-hand side, the debt service levy that would need to be in place in order to fund those projects would be ninety-five cents and that is a forty-two cent increase, uh, from the fifty-three that you're at right now. Uh, on the next page, kinda wanted to look forward because this is a forward planning session. Uh, exhibit one A looks at if you did a hundred and fifty million dollar project in April of twenty-twenty-five, what that bonding capacity legally looks like for the next, well, I guess from twenty-thirty out to twenty-thirty-five and what that builds up to, uh, in the future. So this twenty-twenty-five would be basically a hundred and seventy-four million is your bonding capacity legally. Uh, looking at doing a hundred and fifty million of that. So in twenty-thirty, that bounces back up into sixty-one million roughly. And then it grows by about eight million, eight to nine million dollars per year, getting you out to April twenty-thirty-five out to a hundred and five million dollars at that point in time. So I know we've talked about phased projects and things like that. Um, i- in ten years from doing a hundred and fifty million dollars, you'd be able to basically ask for up to about a hundred million dollars. Uh, I think it's important to note the ninety-five cents wouldn't cover that as far as a no tax rate increase. Anything that you would wanna do future-wise as far as a phased project approach would be another tax increase, assuming the one percent growth. And we've been a little bit higher than that. We don't wanna, we don't wanna assume a bunch of growth, you know, with these projections. So keeping it at the one percent, that, you know, that's what it looks like. So, um, if the phased approach would happen as far as high school wise, you know, you'd have to do a tax increase for a bond issue at that point in time and then potentially even, you know, at least financing to, to supplement the cost.
But out in thirty-five?
In twenty-thirty-five, yeah. The, just because we, we've tried to keep the, the cost as far as the ninety-five cents. We don't want, we don't wanna ask for too much, I guess, is, is the point. So, um, the ninety-five cents funds what you have currently, the twenty million dollars that you borrowed, uh, earlier this year and then the hundred and fifty million dollars on top of that. There's really not a whole lot of access there, um, because we've kinda had those level off payments. So the ninety-five cents, that's what that covers. And then anything else, uh, again, assuming one percent growth. If you grow it two and a half percent, it's gonna look better than that, obviously.
I'm gonna take you through the next couple of portions of this. Uh, the next three pages are exhibit two, exhibit two A and two B. And what those charts, uh, illustrate are the potential estimated annual and monthly impact on, uh, taxpayers. Uh, this takes into account residential, personal, commercial and various types of ag property. Um, if you're leaning to the, uh, the hundred and fifty million option, probably the most pertinent document would be exhibit two A, the second of those. And you can see down, if you look down through the right-hand side, uh, those annual and monthly impacts on various types of property and of various sizes. Moving along, if we look at exhibit three, what you will find on exhibit three are twenty-five schools that are in a similar cohort use as far as enrollment. If, uh, if you ran an extra thirty cents and that were to be successful, as you can see on this chart, right now you're about eleventh out of these twenty-five. And in addition of thirty cents, it would be estimated would put you up about five twenty-one sixty-three, which would put you under Independence and leapfrog over Blue Springs. Uh, the middle section, again, I think is the one that has been talked about the most. That would be forty-two cents extra. Uh, that would get you above Independence and below Park Hill, five thirty-three sixty-three would be the estimate there. Of course, that's based on this year's numbers and those can go up and down depending on what your assessed valuation does from year to year.
Can you say that again? So fifth, the forty, forty-two percent would put us between Blues, between Blue Springs and Independence? Or was that Park Hill and Independence?
I'm sorry, the forty-two cents would put you under Park Hill and above Independence. Five thirty-three sixty-three. You'd be about a nickel under Park Hill. My glasses are working. And then if you went up to fifty-four cents, um, that would, uh, that would put you under North Kansas City, but you'd leapfrog Park Hill at that point. And that would be est, the rate, the rate would be estimated to be five dollars forty-five and sixty-three cents. And that would still, that would still keep you outside the top quintile of this cohort.
And before I guess, uh, before I move on to, I have a sample ballot language in the very last. Um, does anybody have any questions before I move on to that, I guess?
Neil, I'll ask, I'll ask one question.
Yep.
If, just using the number you have here, if we instead went to a fifty-four cent increase throwing that out, but only went to a hundred and fifty million dollars, that's going to significantly reduce the amount of time to get back to our bonding capacity.
Yeah, you would definitely add balance there. The, the quickest way, obviously the quickest way to add bonding capacity is grow. Um, obviously you can't necessarily impact that as much, but, uh.
We hope to with a new high school.
Yeah, the, the debt service balance is, is the next, the next best thing. So, um, in, in some of these phased approaches, uh, what we've done is, yeah, ask for the levy needed upfront. And then you fund your first part of your project. At, at that time, you're paying off principal quicker than what you would with, with the lower levy. Um, it allows you to get to that next phase quicker.
You said at forty-two or fifty-four?
He, he was saying if, if it was at fifty-four and four, but you only did a hundred and fifty million. You know, you ask for, for more upfront levy in order to pay off, you know, that more quickly, those bonds quicker. Uh, it, it builds back your, your bonding capacity and also gives you hopefully some capacity to do a no tax rate increase in there, uh, at some point, uh, much quicker. Uh, that is a, that is an option and that is an approach that some districts have done. Um, in, in our case and building all of our projections, we just assume you ask for, for exactly what you need to pay back the, the amount that you're borrowing. So, um, that's what we had to look at tonight. Again, it can change and it can shift, uh, to whatever you want there. Okay, I'll move on to the, uh, the ballot language as far as just a, a rough draft. Um, really it's a pretty simple ballot. Uh, again, I know we went through this the last time, but. Again, I know we went through this the last time, but has to be in the form of a question, and then has to state the levy increase if that's applicable. In this case, it is, obviously. So really, we left the, the amount that you would be borrowing blank, because we don't know that yet. The purpose of providing funds for the site development, construction, equipping, and furnishing of a new high school building. And then we did put in, it's usually our, kind of our catch-all, to the extent funds are available, complete other repair and improvements to existing facilities of the district. If anything were to pop up, to use that bond money for that, you could do that. With the main priority being, obviously, the high school building and the site development and all that. Underneath that, to issue the, to issue general obligation bonds for the payment thereof resulting in an estimated increase to the debt service property tax levy of, that would be filled with either, you know, the forty-two cents or fifty-four cents, whatever that number would be. And then underneath that, it states it again, it restates it. If the proposition is approved, the adjusted debt service levy of the school district is estimated to increase from fifty-three cents to whichever that would be, ninety-five or dollar seven, whatever that is, or somewhere in the middle, per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation of real property and personal property. We also have that underneath there, just some filing deadlines. Obviously, January twenty-eighth is the deadline. I know you have your, your regular meeting is the twenty-seventh, that you could have that approved at the latest. And then we have some proposition names listed there. I have also noted and read when you've used those. The last one was St. Joe Staff. So that one didn't, wasn't on there, obviously, because that was an operating levy. But I have those from twenty-one, twenty-four, and twenty-nineteen, when you use some of those ballot titles. So the, you know, if you have any revisions or additions that you want within the ballot language, obviously, you can talk about it and let us know, and we can have it revised for your, for your January meetings to put on the, on the ballot if you wish to do that.
The only thing that I would see, and I'm not the expert on this, I'm open to pushback. Would there be any value to us adding in the language, the purpose of providing funds for the site development, blah, 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 of a new high school as plans of the first of two? Like something to the effect, because I, I, I think that there's gonna have, and I understand there's gonna be a campaign team that's working on this, but I do think that there are still some people that are caught on the fact that we're gonna build one mega high school, or we're just building one high school. So I don't know if that's, you know.
Neil and I had this conversation actually a little bit today.
And I don't want it to, I know it could like, I don't want it to link us into that if things don't go the certain.
And, and I guess that, that would be the only concern I would have. Again, you're going to, let's say you put that in and the bond passes. And, and that years from now, the board decides, we don't have the capacity to do that, for whatever reason. There's nothing really tying you, because you would have already had the funds anyway. I think your commitment's gonna be as a board, you're saying, we're doing this first one, and we are committing in the long-range plan that we're gonna commit to a second one. I, I don't, I don't know that there's added value in putting it in the ballot language. I suppose you can, but.
You can, usually, we just say, within the ballot, do that for this issue. You know, everything that's in the ballot's really stuff that you want to get done. So you're showing the, the community, hey, we're doing what we said we were gonna do on this ballot. And then really, that second phase could be like, like Robert's saying, part of the campaign that says, this is just the first piece of it, we, we plan to do this in the long run. But as far as asking, you know, folks to vote on it, really, we usually say and advise to just ask for what you're doing.
I just think there's such a high instance, and this is not just in our community, this is in every community, there's such a high instance of misinformation. And again, I know the committee, the campaign committee is gonna have to do the messaging around that. But we also haven't built anything since, a high school since nineteen one forty-six. So I just, that, that's my only reason why I would advocate for it to be included somehow. But it doesn't have to be.
You could almost put aside, would be like, like for twelve-hundred students.
Yeah, and I'm not trying, I'm, I'm not trying to get, you know, crazy detailed into it. I mean, I know you don't want to do that. I just think that, to what extent possible, explaining what we're doing of, of, it's not a mega school, it's not, you know, the intent is for this to be the first of two. Just my thoughts.
And I mean, that's, like I said, that's up to the board, whatever the board is wanting to put on the ballot. We, we can put that out there, it's just a matter of, will the voter attach to that as far as saying, really separating the two projects, you know, apart from each other phase-wise? Or is it gonna be, even though you do build a great high school, is it gonna be, where's the second one? When is it coming? Where's that gonna be? And getting that pushback where you, you haven't built back the capacity to quite do it yet, you know? Building that expectation within the ballot language versus just as a board. And that's, that's just what I'm saying as far as from us across the state, not necessarily advocating for either, really.
We're gonna be super clear on all that.
Yeah.
Is it, because I keep hearing you say the word phased, and I like that. Is, is it possible to, the word phase in there somewhere or another?
We've done that in, in quite a few districts where they've, they've had the plans, maybe they don't have the capacity, but they're, they're gonna have it in five or six years to.
Proposition phase one.
To have phases, so.
High school phase one.
Yeah, because honestly, until, I mean, I've thought about this, but seeing that, that is way cool. And, you know, I want that opportunity for all the children in our community, and also, we don't want kids all doing whatever they have to do to get to the new high school. So, you know, I don't know. I, I think the word phase might be helpful somewhere or another to attenuate kind of what you're saying with me, that we're not, this is not a one and done.
I think, Neil, you're kind of understanding what the, the questions are.
Yeah.
So you could just send me some copies of some examples?
Yep.
And then I'll forward those to the board, and they can take a look at them.
Yeah, that was once, that was one thing I had written down, because I knew we've talked about it in the, in the long-range planning session. So that was just a question, I wanted to do that and ask that, so.
So obviously, we're very early on in this, we haven't even started with the phase one, but do we have any estimate of how long it's gonna take us to be at that capacity again, to build the second one?
Well, it would be, like I said, on, on that exhibit one A, you'd build back to a hundred and five million by twenty-thirty-five timeframe. Any, anything above that amount, which again, we've seen the price, obviously, of, of construction has been going up. So it's hard to really gauge what that construction cost is gonna be in ten years down the road.
And just so you're all aware, timeline for this one, best-case scenario, we're looking, I mean, what our plans, DLR correctly from, but we're looking fall twenty-eight was when you would open this high school.
And then would it be ten years from then, or ten years from when we pass?
From twenty-five.
This, this hasn't, it's twenty-thirty-five, where it'd be over a hundred million. So any, anything above that amount would have to be coming from a different source. It can't be from bonding, just because that's your legal capacity to borrow. You could borrow as far, as like a lease financing or something like that. But as far as having like a hard timeframe, I, I guess I don't have that. Because just knowing construction costs, I, I could kind of just project forward with what we have based on this project and looking out the next few years, so.
Okay, thank you.
So do you all, you all need to know if we're comfortable at the one fifty and the forty-two? Or what, what all do you need to know from us?
I think that's what you're gonna have to all think about.
You know, I, I think too, I think you probably should look hard at, as you look at the, the future and the prediction costs. I know we didn't want to really have this discussion, we were hoping it would come in at thirty cents. But if you look at the forty-two, I'm not so sure that I wouldn't try to get another concentration number around sixty cents to put yourself in a better position down the road. Because these numbers come in a little bit high, we didn't anticipate them being this high. And as we spoke to the public before, we were talking about seven years. And I, I think we probably need to work up, getting closer to that number, where we put them in, in position to be able to build another school in seven years, or ten years down the road, whatever that may, whatever that looks like. So, and that, that, you know, we could discuss that right now, we can discuss it later. But I, I think forty, you're gonna have to go to forty-two. But, I mean, I think I'd probably look at, eighteen cents is gonna make up a lot of ground for you. And so we can run some predictive numbers to show you exactly what that extra eighteen cents would do, if you want to see that. And that could kind of tell you, because you'll, it's gonna go a long way, eighteen cents is gonna go a long way. If you do it now. Now, if you wait, and you would ask for it two years later. And like, like Neil said, there are other options, there's lease options, there's those types of things. This is the easiest option, but.
It's the easiest and it's the cheapest. It's the cheapest for the army.
Definitely the cheapest, yeah.
You, as far as interest rates, cost of issuance, those things, the bond is the way to go on that. And so as long as you have the capacity, that's what we want, that's what we want to do. And after that point in time, when you're out of capacity, obviously, that's when you look for those alternative financing options, but.
I do think a decision this big should at least entail a work session or something. You know, we don't just make a decision like this with this little time, although you're very detailed, so thank you for that, but.
Yeah, we have a work session scheduled for the thirteenth, and that's all this is about, yeah. DLR is gonna come back, and these guys, we'll, we'll get all that information for you. We were just kind of wanting to understand what to bring. Now, I think we better understand what to bring with your questions, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, all right, the last two items on the agenda are, let's see. The first one, St. Joe Legislative Partnership, and I'm, I'm just gonna speak to both of these at the same time. So K and L, Community Alliance, St. Joseph Agreement. So you have a copy of an agreement that needs to be board-approved, it'll be on the agenda in January. So I just wanted to put it on there to entertain any questions that you might have. But this is a partnership with other community groups. I'm looking for my copy here, but it's the, the city, the county, the school district, Missouri Western, the Chamber of Commerce.
One thirty-ninth.
The one thirty-ninth, United Way, CBB, and Mosaic are the partners. And so we'll, we'll speak specifically to the Community Alliance first. So that's a group, we meet once a month. Right now, I'm the representative or the, the leader of that group. It gets rotated throughout the terms, and obviously, mine will be up in June. So somebody else would be in charge the next time around. Dr. Kennedy is the, is the vice chair right now. So let me just kind of talk about some benefits of what we get from, from that. It's a, it's an opportunity for us to understand or better understand how each individual group can help each other. And, I mean, we have a lot of ideas that are balanced within those conversations. Latonya has been part of those meetings in the past, the board president is invited to that. And so I do think that this is something that we need to continue as a school district, because it is beneficial to us to be a good partner. Because I think if you really, if you want the school district to be the center of your community, then I think that the community needs to be behind what you're trying to do. And so this is an opportunity for us to be a part of that. And then the second piece is the legislative portion. Now, I will tell you this, we weren't, we did not do the legislative portion of it until three years ago, I think. So there was a several-year lapse that we did not use this portion. And I don't know, you know, if you ask me whether it's beneficial, I would tell you that there, there's a lot of information that is given to us, a lot of information that's not specific to public education at times. We have other legislative groups that we are members of, or members of the Missouri Association of School Administrators, who puts out legislative platform. The one that I send you guys would be priorities that come from the greater Kansas City area. Those are the ones that we kind of live by in this area, or the, the partners that we have, or the superintendent group that I'm involved in. So I think that, I'm not saying it's less important, but I am saying that, you know, if, if there was something that you wanted to go away from, or didn't want to be a partner, then, then that's what I would do. But I, I do think you need to be a member of the Community Alliance moving forward. So at this time, I would answer any questions that you, you might have in regards to that.
Is the cost of the Community Alliance twenty thousand?
Twenty thousand for the Community Alliance. And I was trying to get the specific cost of the legislative partner, because we, we went through this last year too. It says in the agreement that it's thirty thousand four fifty, but that comes from the chamber. And when you split that five or six ways, I'm not sure what that is, but Jenny couldn't find it either. Could, did you ever find it, Jenny? On the legislative group, the chamber.
Would that be the member investment?
No. But yeah, I'll get that information for you. This is not a, anything to vote on tonight. But we need to go back and find out what the payment was last year or two years. We've been doing it for two years.
So the only thing that I had with the legislative partnership, and I sat on those calls, and I read your emails, like you had mentioned, there's not a lot of discussion about education, and there's plenty of legislative information regarding public education to talk about. You know, I think that Trent is who I've had most interaction with. He does a great job, if you ask him to track certain bills, he'll report on it. And so I don't know if this is maybe just how we're using it or not using it. But there is a lot of discussion and a lot of opportunities for other partners that are in the contract to testify on bills, to meet with, setting up meetings. I mean, I know that we had Great Northwest Days, and we had a brief conversation with them, but it was about the contract. I think Latonya, UI, and Mr. Reader were there, but that wasn't really to talk about strategy of what we're talking about. And so I, I just, I just feel like if we're going to pay for it, I would like to see us using it. You know, you sent out the, I mean, you sent out the list of prefiled bills, and they're bad. They're bad, they're bad, bad, bad for public education. And so having, having, if we're gonna, if we're gonna have, have it, I would just like to see us actually use it.
Okay, so this is what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna reach out to them and find out if there's a way that I can better participate or be a better member or partner or whatever. And then I'll let you guys know that before we can even get close to the board meeting, so before you have to make that decision as to.
And I don't know, I mean, from those, from the calls, I mean, there was so much about public education. And, I mean, the focus was really on municipalities and infrastructure. And I know those were the things that were going well, sort of, and earmarks and things like that. I know that Missouri Western does a great job of meeting with the local delegation and talking about earmarks and things like that. I would just like to see us doing some of that activity with them.
And then on the Community Alliance aspect of it, I do agree with you, you that it is important to be a part of that. I would just like more collaboration aimed at education.
Okay.
And more, because the idea is all of these entities supporting each other. I would just like more support off of these other entities for the school district in our initiatives.
And you're, you're in a good position right now for that to be the conversation, with me being in the lead. And one thing I will tell you that we have going on, that'll be a big initiative item the next time, is we're trying to figure out, as a community, how to assist with a lot of the ELD population, and how they can, that can be of a partnership with the school district in itself. So if you guys give me ideas that you want, then we're at a good, we're in a good place where I can bring this up. Because there is a specific agenda item that I just added in November or October to talk about things just like this. What, what are we struggling with?
And I think the thing that I, I would have wanted to see is, you know, when we were talking about the four-day week, that those conversations are happening among the Community Alliance. And then if, if the business community or the chamber is, you know, against that idea, then give us solutions. What, how, how can you help us? And then just the twenty-forty plan, I haven't heard anything about the twenty-forty. I haven't heard anything about the 2040 Plan. It's mentioned multiple times in the Alliance information. I haven't heard anything about progress towards those schools.
Okay.
Dr. Edgar, it's 10-150.
Okay, thank you. Okay, future meeting in advance, December 17. Special education, special executive session, superintendent search. Final interviews tomorrow. December 31 is the last day for candid filing for Board of Education, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. only. January 13 is a board work session at 5:30. January 27 is the Board of Education regular meeting. We do need to adjourn to executive session pursuant 6/10/021. Closed meetings and closed records for, one, legal; two, leasing, purchasing, or sale of real estate; three, hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting a particular employees; and 13, individually identifiable personnel records.
Is there a motion? Thank you, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia? Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chasney?
Yes.
Mr. Garing?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Born?
Yes.
This meeting's adjourned.